All right. Good evening, everyone. It's six o'clock, so we will call the Hudsonville Public Schools Board of Education Work Session for February 27th to order. If I can have approval of agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda?
Motion by Andrew with a second.
A second.
Second by Nick. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposing sign? All right, our agenda is approved. So first up tonight, we have our teaching and learning feature with Amy and her... Team!
Team!
Yeah, our team, all right, absolutely.
Well, it's a pleasure tonight to have Kathy Lefandas, our MTSS Coordinator, and some of our academic specialists, MTSS academic specialists here tonight. At the last meeting, I think there were some even questions about, can we get an update about that? And so we have that planned. So at this point, there's just been a tremendous amount of work by the entire team. We've always had multi-tiered systems of support here in Hudsonville, but just really a lot of attempts. And we have had the ESSR funds available, the Hope Reef Funds, to support additional positions in each building, looking at really creating some consistency across the district with some of the systems that truly support students academically. So thrilled to have a team here tonight to walk us through. So I'll turn it over to Kathy.
Yeah. Thank you so much, and good evening, and we're happy to share our work with you today. Excited to do so. And joining me, I have Angie Ferrasi. She's the MTSS Academic Specialist at Park. And we have Katie Farrell, who is at Forest Grove. And Susan Geisel is at Paul M. Hare. So we're going to start here with our tiered instruction. So this is a multi-tiered framework of support. And you will notice that when we present today, that we'll often be mentioning these tiers. So we wanted to ground ourselves here. So we have Tier One being that whole class research-based core instruction for all kids. And then at Tier Two, we have targeted small group interventions for at-risk students. And then at Tier Three, individualized intensive interventions. So again, you hear us say tiers, and so it's coming from this tiered instruction support framework. Today, we'll be zooming in specifically on the MTSS academic specialists and their role, as well as academic collaborative team meetings that we have been doing this year. The academic specialist coordinates the academic MTSS system within buildings and supports staff in implementing interventions in all three tiers. And then the collaborative team, academic collaborative team, examines academic data on a regular basis to inform practices across all three tiers on instruction and implementation.
It's funny when someone asks us what our job is, it's a very long winded answer. It's not quite. There are 11 of us as part of our team. One at the high school, two at the middle schools, and then seven, eight of us at the elementary schools. And so one in each building. Our jobs are broken up into two percentages. Seventy-five percent of it being systems work. And so systems work encompasses a lot of different things. A lot of it has to do with data. So we are helping to coordinate, facilitate, administer assessments. And then we take all of that data and compile it, organize it, make it look really great and easy for teachers to understand. And then we use that data for a lot of different things. Particularly important is the academic collaborative teams, where we actually get to work with the classroom teachers, present their data to them, and then help them decide what decisions need to be made as far as what students we're working with, what we're doing with those students, who's going to do it, how often, all the specifics of those types of things, creating those targeted intervention plans. But then also, we do beyond that, taking that data to think about what our intervention systems are that we're using, coordinate before and after-school tutoring, and then also summer school. And then the other 25% of our position is, again, some of that diagnostic assessment, but more specifically, working with some of our students. We are targeted to meet with students who qualify under the 11T category. 11T encompasses students who are pre-reduced lunch, foster care, homeless, based on ethnicity, special education, English language, or maybe have a 504 in place. And so that population of students is specifically targeted for us to work with. And so we might take them in small groups, work in intervention groups with them, sometimes even move into the classroom and work on Tier One instructions as well.
So one of our bigger roles is our ACT meetings, which is our academic collaborative team meetings, which we've done too so far this year. We are meeting with our grade-level teams at each building, running like a half-day meeting, going over all of that data that we've collected. We are looking at the big-picture data and trying to narrow down our students who are in need of intervention. So we're meeting with the classroom teachers. Sometimes we've had our payroll professionals there and also our resource room teachers. And we're zooming in on the students by looking at all the students at, let's say, third grade and who needs intervention, and the teachers are helping us. And we're just facilitating those conversations and creating action plans for intervention. Two main intervention blocks that we've been focusing on are reading. Within that reading block, we're focusing a lot of cognitive awareness, phonics, and comprehension for students who are struggling with the reading component. And then we are also looking at math and using some delta screeners for that so that our students who are struggling with the math concepts, we can address those needs as well.
And the number there that you say the 808 students have been served across the year so far, that some of those students might be receiving more than one Tier Two intervention because of the numbers, probably a little bit less.
All right, at the secondary level, my list is long. Eight hundred seventy-one kids that were impacting, and like Kathy said, some of them are getting multiple supports from us. So some of the things that we're doing at the middle school, we're working a lot with our intervention classes for math and ELA. So using our data, we identify the kids that could best benefit from those classes and work with counselors to get them scheduled into those classes. And then we push into those classes and provide support for individuals in small groups. We both have a lunch and learn program at the middle school, so that's a time during lunchtime where kids can bring work that they need help with, work on projects, study for tests in physics, things like that. We have an intervention block, we call it Flex at Baldwin and TCB at Riley. And there, we've identified some kids that might need some skill building for math or ELA, so we pull some small groups and run some interventions with them. At Riley, there's Tier One payroll professionals that go into classrooms where there's at-risk students. And again, they're working with classroom work support, studying for tests and quizzes, and also providing like alternate settings for tests for kids who need it. And then we're doing a ton of checking in with kids. Like, we check power school grades, we see those kids that are struggling, and we have individual conversations with them. What support do you need? Here's some strategies that you can use. What can we help you with? And I'm checking with teachers, we're checking with teachers, what do these kids need? And then we're monitoring their progress. And so we're running all over the building, checking in with the kids.
All the time. All the time. And that's happening at the middle school and the high school level. And then at the high school, one of the big programs is the guided academic classes. And there's four guided academic classes, one for each core class, and there's no more than 15 students in each of those classes. And so the specialist pushes into that classes, those classes, to support those students or might work with small groups from within those classes. Like our TCB and Flex, they have seminar where the specialist is pulling groups of kids that are identified by low grades or teacher recommendations. Frequent check-ins as well at the high school. And then also, the specialist is pulling kids out for a variety of reasons. So maybe a kid needs some remediation or needs to make up some work, so they might just miss gym for a day and get caught up on their core classwork. If they've been absent and aren't ready for a test, then the specialist might pull them and help them get caught up so they are ready to take that class, test. Or they might just work with kids before a test to help them even prepare for the test.
So Susan and Andy just talked about within the day Tier Two intervention supports. And now we're going to move into outside of the school day Tier Two intervention, and we'll really dig into the tutoring program that we have. So at the elementary, we provide tutoring in reading, foundational skills and comprehension, as well as math prerequisite skills. At the secondary level, at the middle school, we are tutoring around foundational skills as well and comprehension. And then for math, we tutor around prerequisite skills to access grade-level content, but also provide content support there as well. At the secondary level at the high school, we have a new English Boost tutoring, which is really for those students who have a gap between English 1A and English 1C, so they have like no English that second session, like second try. And so they have been participating in what we're calling an English Boost tutoring to shore up some skills from English 1A and then pre-teaching some skills for the third try. So that has been something new we've added this year. We're also doing the same thing with algebra, those kids who have algebra 1A separated from 1B. And then they also have prerequisite skill tutoring support and content support as well. We've had one session in the fall, which was about eight weeks long. And then we just started at the end of January, an 11-week session until the end of April. So our numbers for tutoring, again, outside of the school day Tier Two intervention. So our student number in the fall of '21-'22 was 121. And this year in the fall, we tutor 210 students. Our winter numbers are at 163. From last year, we're 163, and now we're tutoring 277 students this winter. Our staff. So we have teachers and parents serving as our tutors. And we have, you can see the difference here between fall of '21-'22, we had 41 teachers and parents tutoring for us. And this past fall, we had 74. Last winter, we had 59, and this winter, we have 88. So our program is really growing, which is really exciting. So we have a fall session tutoring data, which is linked here in the slideshow, and it is broken up into total students who have achieved growth in star math and star reading. So you can see if they've achieved any growth. And also, we're hoping for acceleration. So when you see those, that middle and end column where they have equal to or greater than a half-year's growth, and then some have over a full-year's growth in a year's time, that's some exciting news to see that we are accelerating achievement for many kids. And then in addition to our tutoring, at the high school, we do have a couple of other offerings for students to get support. And one of those is exam review. Try One, we had 131 students take advantage of exam reviews during before-school time, before, during exam time. We were hoping to have Try Two data, but because of the snow days last week, we, yeah, the exam reviews are now this week. And then we also have Tag Tutoring to Achieve Academic Growth. And in Try One, we had 40 students take advantage of this drop-in like support, where they can come if they wanted to report some extra support. And then in Try Two, we have 57 students take advantage of that. So we're going to move into some celebrations from our multiple stakeholders for our MTSS system.
So I'm just going to share one of these from the teacher, the bottom middle one. "We're so grateful for the addition of the MTSS specialists in our elementary buildings. Something we know is that literacy provides access to opportunities. And with this belief at the forefront, and with the help of our MTSS specialists, we are now diving deeper than we ever have before into our literacy assessments, practices, and interventions. We are more diagnostic and purposeful in our support for all students." So that's from teachers. But then on the flip side, from the specialists, now that they see the power and impact, teachers are asking for more data and to dig deeper.
One of our principals said that teachers are digging more into individual student data and beginning to try new things. They are open to sharing ideas and trying new learning strategies, even at the Tier One. And one of our students said that they love this time because it's the only time that they feel like they know what they're doing.
I love that bottom right one, too. So one of our academic specialists reported this one to me. She said, "One of her students said, 'Remember, when we called me a mathematician, you were right. I scored the highest that I ever had on a math test.'" There's a lot of confidence building there.
And then from our parents, lots of really positive feedback, but one in particular. She is really enjoying it and tells me he would go to tutoring every day if he could. He seems more confident with his schoolwork. He will never let me help him with his schoolwork, so I'm really glad that he has this opportunity for private instruction.
And really, just to conclude, we're always looking to what's next and how we might grow forward. And this intentional systems work and just really high engagement around data from so many people has identified a real need for a more systematic gathering of data to determine the impact of the work. And so we're currently exploring the use of a Power School add-on called Unified Insights. We're just at the beginning stages of that, but it has some good promise in working to ensure we have the specific tools needed to dig even more deeply into the data moving forward.
Questions?
So obviously, growth in the use of these services. Do you think, is there a specific reason that you see? And obviously, COVID had an impact, I'm sure. Is it that people are feeling less, I don't want to say stigmatized, but know that it's much more of a, "Yeah, I got to go to tutoring too," or, "Yeah, I got to talk to this later." What's your perspective on that?
I think it's definitely becoming more like what we do. And we're just having just deeper, more intentional conversations about kids at a level that we've never had before across the district. And so when we do that, we identify more kids that we can help with because we're just doing a better job of, you know, seeing what's going on. It's more than just looking at their star data and their NSET data, like, okay, so that's red flagging us that there might be something going on. And then we dig deeper and see what exactly is going on. And we're doing around that.
There were, on the one slide, for the secondary, there were 871 students. Is that 871 students that are eligible to receive services? Or students that are receiving services?
Are receiving services. But again, they might be receiving more than one Tier Two support in that day, so they could be.
Because there's only three MTSS specialists, two for middle school and one for high school.
Yes.
So my question is, is do you have enough? I mean, I know there's only so much funding, and I would look at half for funding. Is there any potential that funding could be removed? And we would have to remove these resources since they're funded with the Ursa Funds?
Yeah, so, good question. So, Mandy, at the end of, well, actually, our funding for 11T ends in September of 2024. So the secondary work is more intensive of working on the system. I mean, there is time in there for student support, but it's more building the system at the secondary level than it is at the elementary.
They have 25% of their role is in working with students. So Andrea at the high school is working with students as they are in their buildings. That 25% really zeroing in on the 11T qualifier.
And then we'd also just add that, and I don't know quite where to find it, but at the secondary level, there's the Flex and the Taking Care of Business time that is offered. And at the high school, there's also seminar time where teachers can request students to come and get support. And so there's lots of layers of how students are getting support, as well as at the high school with the, I always forget what Tag stands for. That's why we wrote it down, the Tag Tutoring.
Uh-huh.
So it's not just the academic specialist at the high school. It's maybe some of those other pieces as well. I think that might contribute to some of those numbers, again, knowing they might be coming more than once.
Although Andrea would love to have another person. We have had that conversation.
But to pick up on Bart's question, so is funding at risk because it is Tag Ursa looking at the 24, 25, or will it fold into the budget? Or how do we sustain what is clearly a really valuable program? Well, our plan going into this was to build a program that would sustain itself beyond the most of these positions. We knew we would have some of the positions. And as we brought people in these roles and hired people, with a clear understanding, this is a two-year program. So the, there's no doubt the need is going to be there, and we're always going to be getting students from other districts, if that's all it is, that haven't had the support. But this money, the tough thing about this money is that it's, it's got to be spent on those subgroups. And that's really, really challenging to deal with. Because one of the big misses of Congress was what, I mean, all kids had learning loss, not just kids with, that are in these subgroups. So the academic specialists do a great job with that. And they do help other kids, just when we help those other students, we have to charge their payrolls, other funding sources. So we're going to get out a couple of years and basically evaluate what we have, what we want to fund budget-wise going forward, what we don't need to fund budget-wise, because hopefully it is more systemic, and we'll evaluate this as the next couple of years go on. Is that fair to say? Is that, oh, okay.
Can I also address that we're having a lot of conversations with the legislators also about the need to extend some of these support dollars? Because the need is really going to be prevalent. In a couple of years, we're addressing it now, but it's not going to go away. So that was the conversation we were having last week with the legislators about, at the federal level, this money does not, understand that they want people to sit on it for 10 years and not do anything with it. We've made a lot of strides to do the work now, but that work is not going to end in September of '24.
Amy, what do they use, what do you use for your baseline year to compare how the kids are doing from one year or two years to the next? With COVID in there and the loss that came because of all the pandemic, is there any way to measure from one year to the next, and how do you do that?
Absolutely. So.
Amy, can I, just real quick, so everybody can hear the question.
I'm sorry.
If you hit the button on your mic, I don't know, I think we're going to tell you to hit the button. Your light shows up. I hope Ken's got his, his big understanding. You have to put it right in front of you. Just push it, the light comes on, and then.
Okay.
So the question was really around what data can we use? And do we have data available to us, even due to COVID, that allows us to determine student growth? And the answer is yes, and that's through our benchmark assessments in particular. And then, as Kathy alluded to, there are then diagnostic assessments that are also new to us this year because of this work that allow us to drill a little further down instead of just saying, "Oh, Amy's not scoring as high as she should on her benchmark assessments." Well, let's drill a little further and find out, is it numeracy? Is it number sense? Is it fractions? What does she need support on? And then designing that tutoring specific to that need instead of just like an overarching, "Amy needs help in math." So I would say yes, we definitely have the data that we're able to track to see progress. And that's really the data that is pulled on that particular slide.
I can give you a little bit of anecdotal information. I have a second-grade granddaughter who's in this program. And she was telling me, the week before she went, she said, "Papa, I'm going to be in ballet when I'm growing up, so I don't need this stuff." So we had that conversation with her about the number of ballet people who actually make it. And she understands better now.
Just generally speaking of the three tiers. Is there one that's more effective in terms of remediation than the others? You've got the individuals, the small groups, and the whole class. Are all of those being used pretty effectively, or is one more effective than the other?
Yeah, I think we're all, we're using all of the tiers. And we do talk within our academic collaborative meetings with Tier One, what can we do to support kids with specific targeted needs within the Tier One classroom? So we can do it there, and then we can do it also in a small group format. And then, of course, the intensive, like, one-on-one, more daily intervention and support. So I'm not sure if I could measure one against the other.
All of the above, yeah. I think it's really all of the above. We, in my former role as a build, elementary building principal, we would often call it double dipping, right? So you identify a student who has academic needs. And not only does my teacher need to support me during what we call Tier One instruction, that ELA block or math block with small group instruction or individual support, they also need the intervention, sometimes on prerequisite skills, sometimes on current content. So it's really, that's why the tiers are there, because it's not always a one or the other. Sometimes it's all of the above, depending on the particular student and the particular student's academic needs.
I'm curious about the tutors. We've got a lot of tutors, which is great. And I know that's teachers and parents. Do you have any information on how many, like, what percentage is teachers versus parents? Is it a pretty good mix, or is it?
I can't give you like a hard percentage, but it's definitely more teachers than parents.
And that's happening after school or before school, or?
Before and after school. And transportation is being provided at certain times of the day. So it's provided in the afternoon for elementary, and then the morning for secondary.
It's really been across the district. I mean, transportation, principals assisting, certainly the MTSS academic specialists. I mean, it's, it's, it's been powerful work. So thank you to all of you who are doing it in the buildings, and Kathy for your leadership.
Are there other questions? Thank you. This was an excellent presentation. We appreciate the update and all the work that you've done. Next up is our recognition of visitors and hearing equal presence. Robyn?
First up is Randy Weis, but I've not seen.
I saw Amy come in.
That was an incredible presentation. Sometimes you have something you're going to say, and you set it aside because you're an off. Thank you. I've worked with kids most of my life, and it's always the marginalized kids that are put aside. As a white privilege guy, I just got back from five days in Montgomery, Birmingham, and Selma last night. It's those kids. It's our kids of color. It's our elderly, beautiful kids. I know we keep saying that, but I'm just going to say thank you for all of you who put your neck out there. Questions? Andy? Along with that, I'm off of whoever created this act here. Black History Month, and Stamped by Hughes and Reynolds, and even Max can be, it's one of the most outstanding books on racism and our issues in America, along with some of the others, Brave and Sweet Grass and whatnot, here, that you're not always so aware of until you go down to Selma and Montgomery and you go to the museums. And this one says, "More than money, how economic inequality affects everything." And all of you who tutor, you know that. And all of you, my wife is an off you. I threw children who have graduated from here, and we're an off you. Even when you're in professions, I heard off you. Never complained, you sent me reading. So I just want to say thank you.
Thank you. Next is Andrew, or Aaron Dubey, sorry.
No worries. I just wanted to quickly echo what you just said. That was amazing. Thank you to everyone, all the teachers and parent pros and all the MTSS specialists. Y'all are amazing. That's great work you're doing. We'll definitely be talking to you later to find out what legislatures I need to write to make sure we get that funding. I urge everybody to do that. I just also wanted to very quickly reiterate, this is not new. We've had a dozen or so people come up and say, "We still very much want to hear how we ended up with the one-year instead of the five-year village." I posed the question over email, a simple question of, at what point, or, you know, instead of trying to remember, I can just tell you. It's on my notes on a different page. Or maybe it's not open. "Upon finding out that it was asked for the vote to be unanimous, did you concede and say you would vote for five years?" That's a very simple question. We had very clear instruction. It went behind the scenes. Nobody knows what happened. Code of Conduct states that things are supposed to be, one, conducted openly and honestly. I don't think that happened here. Number, that was step, that was number two. Number four talks about how you are supposed to support the majority regardless of if you personally voted or felt that way. A lot of us clearly don't feel that happened here in accounting, so we can move forward. We were doing good. There were baby steps being made to build that trust back. Like, you talked about, you've seen the FOIA request for Tomlin and all that stuff. That was a great step, trust and verify. Y'all were feeling good, we loved it. And then it all kind of went away. So we really, I know y'all want to move on, we want to move on. We don't want to, I don't want to be talking about this. I want to be celebrating these kids. So let's do that, but we can't do that without some personal responsibility and transparency and trust built back. So I'm asking again, please give an account into what happened. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, we move on to our discussion. All right, next up, we're moving on to our discussion items and first up is our EL programming. Cindy Amy?
I'm Amy Ditmer, who is an EL teacher at the elementary level and coordinator part of her time this year to join for this presentation. We alluded to some of this at our presentation, I believe it was in December when we were reviewing some of our EL student data. But we're really have been kind of diving into some potential and just want to be able to answer any questions that you might have and give any thoughts that you might have before we go too much further down the road with this potential of a multilingual newcomer program. Really, our, some of our whys are that our students who qualify for EL services has really doubled in the last five years. And as of last count, we had 47 students currently enrolled as kindergarteners who are noting one of two things. Either that they spoke, have a different native language other than English or that they speak a different language in their home. And that is a number that is extremely high. When we look at our overall caseload of being 123 to have 47 students. Now, that doesn't mean they will all qualify for services. During March is when we screen our kindergarteners to determine the best placement and get to know them. And Amy will be doing some of the first step of determining whether they need EL services and that's called a WEEDAS screener to determine their proficiency level at the English language, of English language and then determining services based on protocols that are given to us around the screener. So one of the primary, that's one of the primary reasons. And then also you'll notice the second graph on your attachment number three talks to also the increase of students who are part of what we consider immigrant population. And really feeling that EL programming would work to serve a couple of purposes. One is to centralize services, two potentially reduce the number of additional staff that we need. I say potential because until we learn a little bit more about our kindergarten students, we can't answer that completely. And also knowing that those enrollments continue to fluctuate between now and when we actually start school. The second piece is then just how can we provide the most quality services that really support the whole child when we know that they are coming to us with varying needs, not just English language needs. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Amy. She's going to dig a little bit deeper into some of the nuances of what this program might look like.
So particularly in the last three years, we've seen a large influx of families coming from South Korea. And when families and newcomers arrive, they have four basic needs. They needed that welcoming environment, the high quality academic programming that allows them to grow not only in their academic development, but also in their language development as they're acquiring English, the social emotional support. Our students that are immigrants come to us with a variety of needs and they require support from multiple sources. And so I'll share an example in a minute of a family that just recently adopted and the unique needs that some of those students can have just to acculturate into what American schools are. And then also just encouragement and support as they engage into the education system. So as we recognize those needs, some of the public schools were able to help build a foundation for those students to be not only socially and emotionally successful, but also to achieve the academic success. And as I mentioned, we recently had a family adopt three students from Uganda. They came in December and this student's coming from a third world country came with a variety of needs. This is where this department is unique, that an EL student isn't going to be the same. If I say that this EL student needs this, that's not what all of the other hundred students need. And so in the last year, we've worked to develop an equitable intake process for families so that we have a better understanding of what schooling looked like, where they came from, what kind of language proficiency needs they're coming with and then what we can do to set them up for success before they enroll. So spending time helping look at immunizations from other countries. In Uganda, COVID shut schools down completely for two years with no virtual support or anything. So these students came at elementary ages of second, fourth and sixth and finding the best placement for them, recognizing that they have missed two years of instruction. Taking them on tours of schools, not only is that introducing them to a classroom teacher, but it's also teaching them how a bathroom stall lacks and how to wash our hands and what the dryer looks like because the first time they experienced any of those things was in the airport. And so it's recognizing that, yes, they have a lot of academic needs that we need to support, but there's also a lot of social emotional pieces for them to feel comfortable and safe in the classroom. So as we've looked at centralizing services, we're looking for the ability to not only meet our students' needs effectively, but also for our EL staff to meet that efficiently. Hudsonville's a large district by mileage and so EL staff is right now traveling between several buildings. And when we have one high student's need over on the north side and one high student need way on the south side, we're losing some of that time when that staff is needing to travel. And so we've begun looking at processes of other EL newcomer centers in the state, particularly Farmington Hills, Utica and Union High School are three that we've consulted with and looking at their process for how they serve their newcomers, what curriculums they're using. And looking to develop a better understanding as our caseload continues to increase, what kind of effective programming we can use based on other evidence that would help us to increase the effectiveness of meeting those students' needs over the course of an entire school day instead of just the half hour or hour of support that they receive from the EL teacher. Our EL elementary staff has also been participating in a newcomer book study over this course of this year. When we look at who we would invite to participate in the program, we kind of have two angles. One are the students that I've mentioned to you, those students that are coming new to the United States that are immigrating and come with a variety of needs to acculturate into American schools and society. The other are students that are born here, but they still are coming to school with a low level of English proficiency. And that can be a variety of different reasons. But there are students whose families haven't had the opportunity to help them be prepared for school or they need some additional support to be able to achieve that English language proficiency than what the family is able to provide based on the parent's education or some of these other factors that we would look at both of those students qualifying. We'd have some criteria that we would measure. So one is the WEEDAS score. Amy alluded to the WEEDAS screener, that's the first step when a family identifies yes to one of the two language questions. They take the WEEDAS screener and they receive a proficiency score based on listening, reading, writing and speaking. The highest score you can receive is a six. We would look at targeting students receiving that lowest score, a 1.0 to a 3.0. Those are the students who require the most level of academic support for the English language development and for the academic success. Recognizing that that's one assessment piece, we'd also want to look at other school assessments like SARDA, FMP, MLPP and other classroom summative assessments. And then recognizing every student is unique and so we will need to have that case by case basis because sometimes a student can have a lucky guess on a test and that score might be different than our criteria, but we see from a variety of other sources that they would still benefit from that support. The staff that we would look at for this would be an EL trained staff providing an ELA and ELD instruction. So that ELA, English language, and then English language development, so the vocabulary instruction. That would be about an hour and a half of a student's day. And then they would go into their grade level class for math, science, social studies and the specials content areas. The EL staff would be able to push in during that time to support classroom teachers and students on necessary accommodations for those students. And then our next steps at this point, we would like to get some feedback and answer questions that you might have. And then we would also like to pursue a parent focused group with some of the families that we've have taken into Hudsonville over the last couple of years that may have benefited from that program had it existed and that would benefit as we look at possibly pursuing it in the future.
Thank you, Amy. Questions from the board?
Do we have any of these students that are coming in, that are coming to Hudsonville as a school of choice? Are all of them within the district and with, where would they attend?
I don't know if that, I don't know if that would matter. Whether they come in for that reason or once they're here, if they're sending another sibling. They might have current students here and then adopting another child, I'm saying, and I don't know if you'd even know.
I was thinking more from this perspective of a lot of parents who are adopting kids that's close in the community and that, you know, one may say to another, you know what, you've had a real good experience in Hudsonville, why don't you consider that? And that's more what I was thinking about.
Yeah, I'm not aware of a high number of school of choice families. I know with our South Korean families, many of them do work at the same company and that company has recommended this area, but they are Hudsonville residents.
Sure, okay, just, just.
I think to reiterate, and I know there might be some additional questions, but to reiterate, reiterate the importance of a newcomer program allows for not only staff to not have to travel, but also work with each other. You see that in our buildings right now and we have a special ed program in a certain building. You have multiple staff members that are professionals with the same skill sets supporting students. And those, they wouldn't have to travel and they could also work together. The kids are there supporting each other. There's just a lot of advantages that we initially have discovered and started to do this work.
So do you envision having the central, where would the central location be?
That's a great question. We continue to explore what school would have space to house that. And then also looking at currently, our highest number of EL population within buildings is on the south side. Jameson Lower, Upper and South have a high number for our elementaries. And so those aren't necessarily centrally located, but a lot of those schools have a higher number of EL students. And so kind of looking at how many people would need to travel.
You want to keep them in their neighborhood schools if possible, majority, but there's also a need for support to get them back to their neighborhood schools without the support needed. So there's a transportation question, there's a facilities question. You know, there's going to be classrooms open in the north end based on the five, six buildings. We've had discussions about that, so there's all.
There's the logistics.
There's a lot of it.
This is a wonderful program, it's needed, you have to figure out the logistics.
Exactly.
Before we, before we dive in too deep, we wanted to have conversations with the board about, this is something you'd like us to continue to explore.
If I hear right, we're talking about expanding the kindergartner program, correct? Is adding staff and working out, so.
More like centralizing the services.
More centralized, more consolidating, okay.
Absolutely. So let's just say we didn't have a ton new, ton of new new enrollees for next year. In thinking, in theory, this would centralize services to be a lot, to allow not only ease of many of the things that Dr. Nandek spoke about, but also then to eliminate hiring of new staff. Now, because we're in that moment where we have enrolling, I want to be transparent about that. We may still need to be in a situation where we are adding staff due to new enrollees for our next school year. But that is one of the pieces of thinking through that, reducing that travel time as well as all the other things that we mentioned.
Just efficiencies.
Yes.
So should I provide more program service? We're not moving around as much and then there's always going to be that part, Amy talked about, Amy and Amy talked about transitioning back to their school. So there'll always be something, there'll be something in their school, but they're going to be a lot more, they're going to be a lot more efficient for all the others.
Good point, Pat. If a student were to like graduate out of or move out of the newcomer program, the likelihood that they would still need EL services back in their home building would be there. It would just be a different level of support based on typically their WEEDAS scores in reading, writing, speaking and listening as well as the other assessments we mentioned.
Currently are, currently if a student enrolls on the north side, they have received a different level of support than the south side because they might be the only student in that school that's speaking that language or they just have a different feel. Whereas when you're coming to a school that there's three or four others in your grade level, then they're starting to feel that sense of community and belonging. And so while it is important that we do want them in their neighborhood schools, there also is that cultural piece of community and connection that we want to recognize and honor.
I think, and I can just speak to it as well, with just like a stabbing opponent. You know, we'd have contractual obligations that we'd have to give our staff, you know, lunch and planning and all the things. And we're losing out on time that we can utilize our staff. We have so much travel time because they literally are working like three or four buildings in a day. And, you know, as a former principal of a student body that had a really high EL population, when we talk about NTSS and tier, tier one, two and three, there are really, really great tier one interventions that are, that our general classroom teachers can do or our EL learners that also really benefit all learners. And they're just, sign up is a tremendous teaching strategy. And so I think that we have like a, have this anchor program where it's going to be benefiting all staff because they'll know where to get answers from. And right now, that's a big problem, we just don't know. Everyone's like, I have this kid, I want to do everything for him and I don't know why. And so I think that's going to be another piece to this, so.
Absolutely. And that is definitely another layer with the increase in our numbers of students. How do we ensure all teachers have the skills and knowledge to support any student who comes into a classroom? So that's also professional learning that we're looking at and have been looking at and providing over the course of the last couple of years, even to be, to be honest. So that is something that we're also trying to build capacity around.
Yeah, I thought it was interesting when you mentioned the statistics or the conversation about the fact that some of these were people that came through your business. And I think what a great way to support our business community, that they can be assured when they're hiring somebody that's from out of the country, that they can say, but in our district, we have this program that will work with you to help your children assimilate. Because again, we're here to support the business community just like they're here to support us. And it's a global world now. And I think that would definitely, to me, if I was a business person, I would feel good about knowing that that's available. It would be very interesting to know as, as we're increasing these numbers, what some of the, I won't say the reasons are, but have some of that technology related to their parent's job or related to being adopted, that sort of thing. So again, we can kind of gear it towards the need of the community as well.
Forgive me if you're a touch, I didn't split it. This would be for third, through fifth grade, considering?
What we're considering right now, yeah. Our thinking in that is in pre-K kindergarten, first grade, a classroom is set up for so much oral language development. And so our students at that level, it's just easier for them to acquire a second language and they're more naturally getting those supports in the classroom. When we get into upper elementary, depending on what prior schooling they have, it's harder based on their age and then there's usually more of an academic gap as well. And so to teach students basic phonics isn't naturally occurring in third, fourth and fifth grade, whereas it is in those lower elementary grades.
That's helpful. And so the other schools that you looked at that had similar programs, is that a similar approach that they took as well?
It depends.
It varies on district.
Yeah, varies on district. And I would also say that it probably, well, it varies for us, I'll speak to that and then maybe come back to your question, but the idea of what our current caseload needs are, right? So also that, that's also a moving target a little bit, if you will. And, and that is our responsibility as a district each year when we review, adjust and modify our language assistance program to ensure that we're making any of those modifications which we have to submit to the state annually that are specific to meeting our students' needs. And Andrew, now I said it, I forgot the question I was hitting back to.
I'm just curious how that compared to other schools that you guys looked at.
Yeah, so others, some of these schools, like Utica has an extremely high EL population, that they're seeing significantly larger numbers. So they're able to offer that on a larger scale.
Sure.
Our district is unique in the sense that we are just seeing that increase starting to come in our district. And the way that our district is set up is different than some of the districts that we looked at. So the travel is a unique component for us.
That makes sense. When, when do you, when do you have a good number on how many students are going to be in this program each year? Like right 2022, 2023, 2023, got 25, right? Like for next year, when are you going to have a good handle on what that looks like?
Like immigrants.
Yeah, like how do you, how do you gauge that? Like you're setting up a program for this and you're trying to staff it, going to understand what that need is. What's, what's the way to do that?
So we've started to look at incoming enrollments right now, but like Amy said, that continues to happen. So we've started to look at incoming enrollments right now, but like Amy said, that continues to happen over the course of the summer. And they tend to come in all the way up until August. So some of it is having programming in place that we have. Our numbers support the trend that we know that they're coming. The business that a lot of these families from South Korea work at is looking at expanding and adding another building. And so recognizing that we need programming in place so that we have the room to absorb those needs when they are here versus scrambling and readjusting to try to find, oh, this new student came and.
And just to add to that, with staffing, I think that, well, one, some colleges and universities are being really smart in telling their students, their education students to minor in TESOL. Now, if they take the test, that's the key. We have a lot of staff that are reminding them that they aren't, you know, your sort of teacher. But we have been intentional in the last couple of years to hire people with minors in EL so that we have them. And we like tapped into them like, hey, you know, you're a secretary teacher and we need you to shelter in place, or shelter in place, sheltered instruction. Thanks. And, and so then we have them teach it. So they'll teach like five hours or four hours of English and then one hour of, yeah.
It is definitely one of our most popular populations because they have the older testing.
Does the ISD offer any resources in this area or not?
A lot of consult support, which has been great. And, but, but none other than that at this time that I can be held to speak.
Okay, I'm curious.
Any other questions?
I would just say, you know, we, we know a lot of families that are benefiting from this. I think you mentioned that you're going to talk to like parents and kids that are currently in it as well. It'd be better to get feedback from them and say, what are we doing well up? It'd be better. Yeah, I think we need to move, continue to move fast on this because we see the explosive growth. But I think it still feels like small enough where you can set up a good foundation yet before it gets out of control. And I would just, I think, kind of echo where you were going with this, but we know families that have kids that are older too, that I don't think it just stops at fifth grade. And I know you alluded to things that you're constrained by, but we can continue to look, whether it's working with NTSS or the other resources that we have. Some of these kids are still struggling as we get into.
And we are required to provide support for any student who is requiring EL support and services based on their need of screener. And so that is programming that we are looking at right now and modifying. I think we've got some really good plans set up, kind of to echo what Amy said, offering some sheltered instruction courses at the middle school level and the high school level, which counts as their ELA credit. But it's also taught by someone who is certified with a TESOL endorsement and so forth. And so they have that skill level of being able to teach English as a second language, but also qualifies for their ELA credit. And so yes, please, this is just specific to elementary at this time, based on our current caseloads. And then there's definitely programming that we offer at middle school and high school level as well.
One more quick thing. I think centralizing this program geographically makes sense for all the obvious reasons. But if that's not possible, might make, might make sense to have like a northern pub and a southern pub potentially, especially now that we've got a bunch of fifth graders that are going to be in the same place.
Yes.
You know, so just things to, I mean, not all the answers, but just things to think about.
Yeah. All right. Thank you very much, Amy. All right, next up we have our library update.
Good evening. I've been asked to provide an update about the work that we've been doing in and around our libraries over the course of the school year. Pulling up our slideshow. I think you have a printed copy as well. Some areas that we wanted to work on were providing transparency for families around what's in our library collections, providing agency for families, making them realize they have some say in what is appropriate for their child. And then also we've been focusing on our professional standards in our libraries.
Scared.
Okay. So I think that last time I spoke with you in September, we were just getting into the steps of increased transparency. So on the week of September 26th, all families with students in the building received an email from their building principal that included a link to their building's library catalog, instructions for accessing their child's library, Alexandria library account. There they can see their current checkouts as well as their checkout history, as long as they've been in that building. Each building has its own library database, so it's like they each have their own separate program. So it doesn't really like travel with them from one building to the next. There's also a link provided to a form where a parent or guardian could restrict to access specific titles from the library for their child if for one reason or another, they felt like there was something in the library that was not a good fit for their family's expectations. And that was completed by parents or guardians who wanted to check out those titles, or I'm sorry, restrict those titles, not check out those. Then that information, the same information was also shared on each building's page of the HPS website. And there's also a document that we had in January that is the HPS frequently asked questions document. And it just kind of gives an overview of a lot of questions that people might have. How do we choose things for our library? Are there policies guiding what we have in our library? What if I don't want my kid to read something that's in the library? So that's also available on each building's specific page on the website. And so there was our increased transparency and agency. I wanted to give you some information about the process for restricted items. The form when parents fill it out, that submits the data to me. And then I go ahead and restrict, I'm the one who does that. I put a list in the student's account. So when, I think I demonstrated that in September, if you were here, an alert pops up. And then whoever is, is working at the desk will just say to the student, oh, I'm sorry, we're not going to check that out. And they choose to go. I also emailed the parents, actually a screenshot of that restricted access in their student's account. And then we make sure the library staff is aware. They get a copy of the same email, the parent's, you and the student's ELA teacher, if they're a middle school or high school student. If they're an elementary student, we let their classroom teacher know, just so that they're aware. Classroom libraries are separate from our school libraries. But then the ELA or classroom teacher can just follow up with that student and be like, hey, just want to make sure that you're aware that this is your, your family's expectation. And we're going to work together to make sure that we're honoring that expectation in this room as well as in the library. So I would like to share some data from that restriction process. We're looking only at the students in the elementary buildings, middle school and high school. We excluded the ACC in this case because they don't have really a centralized building library. It's all within their classrooms and they don't have it within Alexandria and they're just not doing any independent reading. I mean, they're great teachers in the ACC, they're hard kids, but we're not, they're, yeah. So in those buildings, we have 606, 6,683 students enrolled and they represent 3,463 families. And this was as of February 21st. So there could be a tiny bit of fluctuation here and there. This is just the distribution of the building levels. So just under half of our kids are in our elementary buildings. And then a quarterish, give or take each in the high school and middle school. And again, that excludes numbers from the ACC. Of those 6,683 students who are using our HPS libraries, parents restricted titles for 11 kids. So there is a tiny pink sliver, coral, whatever you want to call it, in that pie chart. And that is about, oh boy, I have to think, few place value because I don't usually go that far. 16, 10,000ths of a percent of our students who have restricted items for them in the library. And then I also wrote that down by family. So of those 3,463 families, six families requested to restrict titles. And that percent is pretty close in line, it's just a little bit higher. So in our elementary buildings, 3,194 of those students in our elementary buildings and no parents in our elementary buildings requested to restrict any titles for their kids. That's amazing. In our middle schools, between our two buildings, we have 1,525 students. Three students have titles restricted. One student at Baldwin, it's one family, one student. Two families, two students at Riley. So three families total and it's 29 unique titles that parents have requested to be restricted for one reason or another, for their middle schoolers. High school is going to, well, Memphis will be fine. Okay, 1,964 students here, eight students with restricted access, and they represent five different families. So some families restricted access for more than one child. And it's 45 unique total, or titles at the high school. Overall, some of these items won't add up and I'll explain why here in just a second. But six total parents or families requesting restriction, 11 students affected, and it's 64 unique titles. Some of the reason would be that maybe we have a book that is at a high school level and then a middle school level. I'll get into this part a little bit further, but some notes that I wanted to share. When we opened up our catalogs, we discovered that there were item records for items that we don't have any copies of. And I'll get into a little bit more detail of that later. But of those 64 titles, I kept that data in there. But of those 64 titles, six of those, we, we didn't even have in our library at the time that we opened our catalog. Whoops. Four of the six parents who requested to restrict those titles did so for multiple children. And sometimes sharing more than one building. And some titles are available. Okay, I covered that. Let's see. Reconsideration of tax data. We have had three new requests this year. So our process goes, if you're not familiar, when a parent or community member requests a reconsideration of tax, the first level that examines it is a building level committee. So for one of those, the building level committee decided that it was appropriate at that grade level and the parent was content with that decision. Another text was decided, let's just move that up to a higher grade level. And the parent was also happy with that decision. We have a third text that the building review committee recommended to leave where it was. And a parent appealed that. So we're in the process right now of having the full book review committee. Okay. Some notice things that we had. Systems from energy patrons and items within Alexandria, which is our library cataloging system. We're a little bit inconsistent throughout the district and there's lots of reasons for that. We haven't had certified librarians in our district since 2014. And everybody who was managing a building library has been doing a great job, but they're just kind of all working on their own in isolation and there wasn't really much guidance. So it, it got to be less and less consistent between buildings. And that's not saying that anyone was doing a bad job. We're just trying to tighten it up a little bit. We also noticed that our library catalogs included records for lots of books that were no longer part of our library collections. And we can talk in a few minutes about some reasons that books might not be in our library collections anymore. And then we also recognized that some collection development and collection management processes haven't been really in alignment with professionally recognized best practice. So our next steps are we've been working to develop and implement consistent systems for item management and patron management so that we're all doing the same thing and that we are having kind of a schedule for things to happen so that we make sure that it all does happen. We're updating our library catalogs to make sure that they accurately reflect items in our collection. To be clear there, our library catalogs showed a lot more than we had. It wasn't that we had books that were not in our catalogs. It was that we had a lot of records in our catalog for things we just don't have any more of. And then we're also working to shift our own practices to make sure that we are in greater alignment with professionally recognized best practice. So one area that we're working on shifting into best practice is collection development. We've been working hard this year to build awareness of collection development guidelines, selection tools for various groups, for our library staff, working in our libraries every day, for our classroom teachers, as they're developing their, their own classroom libraries. And also we're just making our administrators aware of what we're doing as well. We've, we've had book guidelines in place, but we're making sure those are consistently communicated. And now people have a central place to go when they have a question and it's here. And then we've also clarified purchasing processes for our school libraries. And then also we've been doing some work to support our classroom teachers when they have the option to use district funds to add to their classroom libraries as well. And we've been doing some work around what types of review sources are appropriate and best for informing our selection decisions. So on that note, I want to talk a little bit about some different types of review sources. So the first type of review sources, and this is where we really focus, are focusing. We're trying to make sure we're shifting our focus back to this. These would be professional reviews, things that are found in professional trained publications. Library Journal, Kirkus, Hornbook, Booklist, you've probably heard those mentioned before as we've talked about book guidelines. They're written by reviewers who are professionally trained and have expertise in providing objective reviews. And they are written specifically for the purpose of informing collection development and informing library materials, or library workers, excuse me, in selecting materials. Informal reviews are another type of reviews. These are typically designed for use by consumers. Amazon, Goodreads, Common Sense Media are all examples of informal review sources. They tend to be a little bit more subjective and reflect a reviewer's personal bias about sometimes the content or the characters a little bit more than a professional review. Another place that gets sticky with the informal review sources is that they often have a section of crowdsourced reviews. So I will use Common Sense Media as an example. I can log into Common Sense Media and I can see a review that Common Sense Media provides, but I can also see a whole listing of review that parents or kids have provided, which can be helpful at times, but I, that's not really necessarily where I want to make my go-to place. Another thing that's tricky about that is reviews can be added or removed at any time. So I had a person share a concern with me about a book that we had purchased in our library in 2004. And they brought with them a review from like 2015 or something. Like it's, I can't, that's kind of redirected. Like that gets a little bit sticky to be using the, using those that can come and go. And then some questions came up about removing books from the library. So I think there was some misunderstanding about removing a title versus when we weed a title. So I'm not a gardener. I would like to be. It's not a strong suit. We would not have done well in the pioneer days in our family. So like if you're a gardener, you know that you need to weed your garden, you need to remove the old stuff or the things that aren't useful so that the good things can thrive. And we also weed our library collections. So it's a process of removing materials from the library collection and it's based on criteria. It's not just like, oh, I don't like this one or, oh, Suzie said this was a dumb book, we'll get rid of that. It's sometimes called de-selection of collection rule and it's a widely recognized best practice. Some of the reasons we do it are to save shelf space. If our shelves are so crammed full, they're not inviting or easy to browse for our readers. And like, think about like a, when I walk into my kitchen, if my kitchen counter is cluttered, I want nothing to do with it. But when it's clear, it feels good and I want to be there. So that's kind of also the thought around our shelving. Also, it helps us remove outdated material and it helps the library staff keep up with where we need to develop our collection. So we do use some specific criteria. So we do use some specific criteria around weeding. It's a little bit more complicated than this, but we look for things that are worn out, first of all. So I wish I kept some of the books that we've been weeding one of our elementary collections. Books that are damaged, moldy, like you would not believe the stuff that comes, if you've taught in elementary class, you would believe the stuff that comes back. So things that are ruined beyond fixing, or they're just damaged and gross. And sometimes when we weed, I wish we might replace. So we might weed a copy and replace it. I'm thinking in my classroom library, it was Diary of a Wimpy Kid. The kids loved those books, and they would be destroyed, right? So I might get three new Diary of a Wimpy Kid and weed some copies. Another way, reason we weed is if materials are out of date. That is a lot in the nonfiction section. If things are rarely used, we went through this year and we just pulled a list of like, which things haven't circulated in ten years. We did that at one of our elementaries, and we had a lot of stuff that hasn't circulated in ten years. So if it hasn't circulated in the fiction section in ten years, like, we can probably make room for something that will. And then for nonfiction, sometimes they could be irrelevant or don't fit curricular needs anymore. Like, maybe they used to do a big state project in a certain grade level, and then they don't anymore, then you have all these state books that maybe you just need one of each instead of three of each, so. Also, then we weed things that are trivial or fetish. This happens a lot at the elementary. For example, like, this is the only one I can think of, and it's a little smaller than most of our elementary kids' interests, but Paw Patrol, all the kids love Paw Patrol, so you would get all the Paw Patrol beginning reader books, and then like, four years later, the kids aren't watching Paw Patrol anymore, so we might weed the Paw Patrol books because they're just, they're kind of fetish, they're not interesting for the kids anymore. So those are another reason we might weed. One additional thing I wanted to bring up is a student project. We have a sophomore here at the high school who is working on her Girl Scouts Gold Award project. So I wasn't familiar with this before she came to me, but it's the Girl Scouts kind of equivalent of the Eagle Scout project. So it's their highest rank project they can do. And she has been following news and trends and information about books, and she's like, I want to help with this. So she approached Mr. Beal and Mrs. Taylor and came up with an idea, and then I got to get on board once I was in this role. But she is creating of resources for parents and caregivers to be involved in the reading lives of their children. She's working out some tools for helping children select books. I don't want to go into too many details, because really, when she has it completed, I want her to come and share with you, and I don't want to steal her thunder. But she's made some really cool stuff. And then she's also creating, gathering information to create guides for talking with their kids about what they're reading. So I'm super excited for that to get done. And what a great project, like, she's so self-directed. It's different, I just came from fifth grade, so, yeah. This is whole, she just comes and tells you what she's gonna do, and then asks for some feedback, and that is beautiful. I feel like I threw a lot of information at you, but what questions might you have? Questions from the board?
When you're reviewing the book, it's been questioned by a parent or a student. Does the committee read the book?
At the building level, they don't, they look at reviews, and they look at the grade, age level of the kids, they look at professional reviews, so they do a bunch of gathering of information, and then they make that level-one decision. They don't need to read the entire book, but when, so like, in the case of the book that we're discussing right now, the building level committee recommended that stayed, the parent then requested to appeal that, so we have the full committee, and that whole committee is reading the entire book.
I have a question. You mentioned the book that was written in two thousand four, and then had a review from two thousand fifteen, and you kind of discounted that review. Particular to me, why?
I'm not saying that's not a valid review, I think it is a valid review, but I also think it's a little bit unfair to come after the fact and say, like, though, this is not really a super comparable example, but like, it used to be very common for everybody to smoke. And then later, we learned that it wasn't, but like, we're not gonna judge the people who smoked before they knew it was unhealthy by the standard that we now know. So that's kind, it's not really that we aren't willing to read those reviews, but when someone comes to us and says, how dare you have this book, it has this terrible review, well, that terrible review did exist when I purchased the book, or whoever purchased the book in two thousand four, which was not me.
So George Washington statue is safe?
George Washington, sure. Yeah.
And I just, I was just asking why that particular case, I don't disagree or agree with that one.
But that's where it gets sticky, because sometimes then people can say, we found this review, well, we didn't have access to that review immediately, so.
I know you've worked really hard, thank you for this, and to your team, that's all. When you say it's working, like Alexandria, like I look at the data, I mean, it's working?
I would say it's working.
Seems like you have responded to community requests and implemented it, and gave everybody the opportunity, and those that wanted to take advantage?
Right.
I would still say in conversations with teachers, teachers will still, they're doing what they've always done, and then the parent reaches out and says, I have a concern about, my child has some trauma, I have a concern about my child reading books with this content in it. That continues to be just a true partnership between teachers and students, and that's, or parents and teachers. And then I do believe this is working. I think that that's just that added layer that we know and will always continue, because that's who our teachers are, and our parents trust our teachers, and they reach out and have those conversations when they have concerns, when they know their child best. And then the teachers really work with them to say, hey, I'm glad to know that, and I will make sure that I keep an eye on what Holden is reading in my class, and reach out if I have any concerns, and that's always been the case, and that is continuing. I just had some recent conversations with some students.
I appreciate, again, I know how hard you've worked on it, and I feel that it was not an easy lift or some work, but it didn't hurt anybody, and you did a great job.
I think it really accomplished what we wanted to accomplish, and that is that parents, we want to partner with parents, and parents definitely, we want to help support them in what they think is the right fit for their child. And at the same time, we don't want to take away someone else's opportunity to do what they think is right for their child.
No, I guess that's what I'm getting at.
Yeah, that's a good balance.
Nobody loses in this area. It gives the parents the visibility into it without taking away from anyone, so, thank you.
One more quick question, have all of the, so the requests that have been submitted for reconsidering textbooks, have those all been parents, or have any of them been community members?
Those have all been submitted by a parent.
But community members that don't have kids in the district can also, is that right?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, that's what I wanted, I just wanted to make sure.
Our procedures are set up because the first contact, certainly, we always would request that a parent have a conversation with the teacher about the book, or whatever, but yes.
I just wanted to make sure, I thought I heard community or parent, but it's parents.
It's parents, yeah.
And I am a data guy, so I appreciate the data that you've shown here, and in having conversations with parents who periodically call, I'll be able to point them to this and say, you know, if you have any issues or concerns, please contact the school and go from there. So, pretty compelling, yeah, thank you.
Now, when we envision the librarian position, the media specialist position coming in, I mean, this is a sort of, at least, I'll speak for myself, the sort of information, the sort of approach, the sort of data-driven, evidence-based evaluation of our collection, of our approach to educating or informing the district of what we are doing, and informing our parents of what we are doing. So I just, I really commend the work that was done. This is very, and at least, again, speaking for me, we didn't know, I didn't know what I didn't know, but I knew there were people out there like yourself that knew a lot more of the science, some library science than I'll ever know.
I do a lot of guiding, lots of other people do some of the lifting, so.
Well, under your guidance and leadership, so this is very, this is, for me, this was very much appreciated, and again, reflects what I think, at least myself and the others on the board, and I talk about our position. So really nice, evidence-based work, data-driven work, so thank you.
So thank you, I kind of see this as a first step, and we'll continue. Couple of questions, number one, the books that parents could identify to not have the children read, but we didn't have them, have those been removed off the list?
Yes.
Okay. And second question is, you don't know what you don't know. So I really would like to get to where these professional sites have these reviews, and the reviews are available for the parents to read. Because just to read a title, I don't know what's in the book, and to even take a title and to maybe Google it, the description of the book may sound absolutely wonderful. But once you start to read the book, there might be some red flags that appear. And a parent wouldn't necessarily know that, but if we had a review that they could look at, so I don't, are there reviews?
So let me give you an example of what we've done for some of our book clubs. Let's see, this is a whole nother layer of. This is another layer, but I do want to show you, like, how we're making these available. So this is a sixth grade book club, sorry, I didn't plan to show this, so.
Can you make it bigger for me?
I hope so. Here it is, I see it. This is where I really like being in the high school, because I have a whole building full of technology coaches. They're so happy to show me. So this is what we did for our sixth grade book clubs. So we, also, I know there is concern about, we were sharing Common Sense Media, but parents could only get a certain number of reviews. So as we're trying to make sure we're shifting back to that professional practice of using the professional review sources, for our book club books, we're able to, we're able to link a lot of these, at least one, and we do link Common Sense Media if we can, but we try to give other options as well.
That don't have restrictions on how often, how many times.
You can sometimes find the editorial reviews, the professional reviews, if you know where to look, like on Amazon or Barnes &amp; Noble. And consumer reviews are often adequate for, like, if my kid comes home and says, can I read this book? Like, I'm probably still gonna look at consumer reviews, as a mom. But for our library, because we're using maybe a little bit different criteria than parents might use, we're shifting to the professional version.
And that's, like, we're a professional organization, right? So we'll use those professional reviews, but trying to provide those opportunities for parents if they just want to Google that. There are, not only are we providing links and overall comments, but, yeah.
And sometimes you can see, like, on Amazon, our Barnes &amp; Noble, sometimes you will find a tab for professional reviews, or they'll call them editorial reviews sometimes, but I know for some books, I've seen them even on Amazon. Other questions? Are, thank you very much. All right, next up, we have our high school alternative education.
Just this?
Yeah.
Sure.
Would you like us to project, you have it as an attachment, would you like us to project it as well?
It's small.
It's small.
It's not, it's not.
You did it on purpose.
We had to fit a lot of information.
There's a hundred and fifty-six pages on this document.
It's small, I'd say go for it, Jordan.
Well, this is a first kind of step in trying to get some feedback and tell you about what we've been discussing, but I'll kind of start about with the reason why we feel that this is a need here at Hudson High School. And the second page, there's only two pages in this section of the agenda. The data shows students that have transferred out of Hudson High School since two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. And I'll even go back to last month when we talked about our building goal, which is that ninety-eight percent of our students are on track for graduation. And on track for graduation is something that we look at for credit totals based on how long they've been here, and all the way down by trimester. So after, right now, we're just finishing up our second trimester exams, and to be considered on track as a sophomore after your second trimester, there's a certain number that we have and we use to kind of determine whether or not you're on track from that data that we shared with you in February. And as we use that chart, and we apply it to the students that have transferred out over the last four school years, and the data we have for this school year is as of the end of January, about half of the students that leave Hudson High School are credit deficient, or not on track to graduate. So even though we are very proud of that ninety-eight percent where we are at currently, so we're meeting that goal, when there's two thousand students in the high school, that two percent is forty students, let's map that up. So that still seems like it's not okay. You know, we don't like having conversations, we as administrators and counselors are saying, you've gotten to a point now, despite all of our best efforts with our MTSS programming, our seminar intervention time, sometimes there's a myriad of reasons why students either aren't showing up or aren't making it to get to the twenty-eight credits that are needed for our graduation requirements. And it's, twenty-eight credits is higher than most schools, because we are on a trimester, so it offers more opportunity to earn credit each year than in a semester schedule. And at a certain point, a student has other options to go get a diploma from another institution at far less of a graduation requirement. You need eighteen credits to get a Michigan merit diploma. We require twenty-eight. There are programs out there online or alternative, quote-unquote, that offer just the eighteen credits for, needed for a Michigan merit diploma. There are other school districts in our area that offer these kinds of programs, and we don't. And as someone who has been around this district for a long time, I can think back to even my own time here, this was something that was always sort of outsourced, for lack of a better word, where students will transfer out to another district that has an opportunity, and you probably remember the schools that, kids that you may have heard of that transferred out to these programs, and that is starting to feel not okay, because a lot of times, there are students, they've been here, we've tried all these things, and then it gets to a point, they're seventeen years old, and they're just not gonna get to that twenty-eight. And we don't have an option for them, we don't have a path for them to be able to do that, and that's, it doesn't feel good. So we've had different opportunities that we've explored, even a partnership this year with Kellogg'sville Virtual, if you recall that from last year, maybe around this time. There have only been a few students that have chosen that course of action for various reasons, but it's been a very small handful of students, because it is not an in-person situation, it's fully online. And even though they do have some support from that program, what we've seen is that it has not been enough. So in conversations with other principals in the area, I can also say that we're in the minority in our area for not offering this kind of path, or reduced, credit-induced alternative path for a Michigan merit diploma. We would look at, should this be something that we pursue more? Right now, we're just in the discussion phase, like, we should do something about this. And we've considered a lot of avenues of how we would provide instruction. It would be an in-person, we would want the students in here on a day-to-day basis, it would not be just go do this program online, because we would want it to be a small, again, not servicing a ton of students, but giving them hope for a diploma. We would want them here, we would want to provide the culture and small kind of atmosphere with teachers supporting them all the way through. We would use an online platform for instruction and earning credit and delivering curriculum, because students have a bunch of different needs, and some of those platforms offer the ability to actually progress faster than a time-based, you know, curriculum delivery, where you can only earn a half a credit for a trimester course going every single day, as is the traditional method. So the components would also include other things besides just working at a rapid pace to try to catch up and earn the credits needed for a diploma. It would also include, you know, opportunities for work-based learning, for community outreach, for really giving them work skills, and we want them to be. And we want them to be successful, not just get your diploma and we're so glad. It's, it's more about helping provide some soft skills and some opportunity experience, uh, where for students that maybe have not been very successful during their time, uh, in the K-12 traditional system. So really wanting to be able to visit, to learn, to build a program, uh, that's gonna be successful for these students, not just to earn a diploma, but to be successful adults. So that's, that is a really quick overview. The second page does show you some breakdown with some of the data, if you want to know exactly where students are going. Um, but you can see there that the, kind of the bottom line, where it shows how many students total each year, um, are leaving to go to online or alternative or homeschool, uh, uh, settings, and then the number of those that are behind pace. And if you look at the total, kind of in the bottom right corner of that data set on the top of the page, um, it's a hundred and eleven out of two hundred and twenty-one students that have left. Um, and we're kind of on pace to have more again this year even than last year. So it's been a steady increase each year. Some of that, it, it's impossible to say is, isn't due to COVID, uh, or other, other reasons why families maybe chose online, uh, or homeschool options. But, uh, it's the students that we're focused on for this conversation, the ones that are behind pace, um, and their credits towards graduation. So, um, is there anything that I, I went, I know I went through that quickly, but.
Can I just reiterate, uh, just to highlight, you know, one of the things we've been studying is ultimate pathways to graduation. We've talked about this as a, as a sore hole, um, for the past two and a half years. Uh, and having this discussion really comes down to looking at some of the numbers. When half of your students that leave, um, are leaving to go to an online or dropping out an alternative high school, half of those students were behind and credit deficient at that time. We believe there are ways that we can keep those kids here and get them to a point of graduation. It does have a little bit to do with the policy that we discussed, uh, a month or so ago when we talked about Carnegie units. I believe that came up at a discussion. Uh, maybe we had to deviate from the Carnegie unit when it comes to this opportunity. Um, but really this is a discussion that, um, can we continue to explore this idea? Because I believe, uh, we, I would say we, the four of us came from districts that had similar programs. And it was very successful for a, a population of students that it could be successful for. Um, so we'd like to hold on to those kids. We believe that we can give them an opportunity to still graduate, um, from Hudsonville Public Schools. The diploma might look different. The board will have a lot of conversations on what that looks like, what the expectations are. But we believe that if we have conversations now, we might be able to get something in place to keep a lot of these kids even next school year.
You know, Dawn mentioned earlier that we want to work with the employers in the community. And, and more and more kids are going to trade schools now. I mean, it's, and, and what they say, the, the college enrollment in Michigan was now at its lowest point, and I don't know how long, percentage-wise. But if they, is there, is, is there anything we're looking at as far as, okay, these, these kids are, maybe they're not gonna be, you know, college kids, which is either right or wrong. But there's other places where they could plug in and they could probably make a hundred thousand dollars a year within a couple, three years while someone else is paying forty to go somewhere.
Yeah.
I mean.
I don't think we're, and, and to that point, I, I think the idea is not to say we want to get these kids college-ready by the time they graduate. The idea is to get them a high school diploma.
Right, but, yeah.
To get them a high school diploma is something you can never take away from a, from a.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of what I was asking.
The sad fact is that when students get to a certain point where they're too far behind in credits, they don't, they lose out on opportunities like the tech center. To maybe go and, and, and get exposure to learning a trade or to be able to graduate with that certificate or that knowledge, know how to weld and make six figures because you can weld, uh, you know, they're not, they're not afforded that opportunity because they're behind in credits towards the twenty-eight to get to graduation. So they are unable to even go to the tech center.
They lose that self-confidence that they need to be able to, and those are the things that are extremely important.
We used to have, was it called the Orion School?
Yeah, that was, that was what I was kind of alluding to, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and that was, that was in Granville District.
Yeah, we had a building there, canal.
Yep, yep. That, that no longer exists. Granville does have an alternative program. They have, they no longer accept, uh, most districts, to, to Doug's point from earlier, is that, uh, most districts keep the students there and provide that service, but they're in-district students. So this partnership with Kellogg'sville Virtual is, is very unique and similar to what we have with Granville with Orion. Um, but, uh, Granville's our alternative high school. I forget the name right now. They don't accept students from outside the district, so they wouldn't take, you know, one of our students for school choice or that.
So there's no talk of the three districts working together again?
No, they've, they're all kind of taking care of their own. Yeah, good question.
At what, what point do we look at getting these kids into this program? Like, as soon as they fall, like, when they get to the point, whether it's tenth grade or eleventh?
Yeah.
And the numbers aren't gonna work anymore, that's when they're enrolled, or how long do they wait?
We would focus on, uh, for, for providing this opportunity for the, for the coming year. We would look at students who are in their second and third year so that they would be on pace to graduate in their fourth year. And we would look first at those current third-year students that are, um, like, let's, let's just say, for example, that we were looking at next year, we would look at current juniors or supposed to be juniors and have to start with our list there. And we don't know what, you know, what size the program would be or how many that we would be able to fit in that program as it, as, as it is. Um, but we would start with the third-year in the building students for their fourth year so they could be on time with their coursework class.
That is true.
Yep.
And sometimes you'll have students that have different life factors that have caused them to need to earn credits where they recover and they want to move back, uh, if you will. So, so really not, not try to be as fluid because you want kids to be part of a, a system. Um, but there could be life, life circumstances that change their, their motivation.
Two quick questions. What's the credit difference between the traditional and the alternative?
Well, it depends on what we would kind of establish for like a handbook or expectation because this would be a separate, likely a separate diploma, a separate school name and everything. Uh, so we could change the school code even, yep, different school code. And that's, so we could set the graduation requirements at whatever we deem, uh, would be appropriate. But the, the state requires eighteen credits.
The minimum threshold would be the Michigan merit.
That's the minimum to earn a diploma in the state. Now, some alternative programs in the area add a credit here or there for, for, for whatever reason, for a class maybe that they deem, you know, essential, but it's all, that's all kind of local control.
And then to my second question, would they participate in the additional graduation ceremony?
Another great question. We, we could have them do that. We could also have them have their own separate, uh, ceremony. And schools around our area do it both ways. Some of them allow their students to participate with the rest of their class in the, in the regular, normal, traditional high school graduation ceremony. Some don't allow that and only have a smaller ceremony for those, uh, and some allow students to do both.
Yeah, I, I went every year to the Orion graduation. Highly emotional event.
Very.
Uh, very successful for these kids. Would you like to tell us something?
So we often times compare ourselves to other schools that have similar number of previous lunches. We look at test scores and things like that. There's like eleven or twelve schools I think that we've looked at. Do, do we know if, if those schools have similar programs to this?
That's a good question. Many, many of them do. I know more about the ones directly near us.
Yeah, like some of those light, just, yeah, that we've looked at before.
Just, just that.
Yeah, we can look into that for sure.
No, you know, Rockford's, I know less.
I know Howard's.
Howard's on there.
I know Rockford's. Right, yeah.
And my second question is, would this program be significantly different than other programs around, like, near us? And would, would, would this program be an attractant for students to come here? Similar to what Dawn was saying about attracting, you know, Korean-speaking students, for example. Right? Would, would this program be an attractant for people? Or would it be something that's similar enough to other schools where?
Should be.
I'm just, just curious. I don't know, because it's not, I'm, I'm not sure I answer that.
I think, I think some of the conversation that we've had so far has been really about trying to support the whole child.
Yeah.
And not just that credit recovery, get through as fast as you can, sit at a computer from the time you get here to the time you leave. Um, I think that's unique, um, and I think that in the long run, it could attract others um, to join our alternative ed program.
It could. It would be, um, right, in its infancy, I would want it to focus on helping students that we have here.
That are here, right. And that's, that's kind of what I was, I was, but would we allow, I don't know, the answer to this, you know?
Would we allow students from outside of our district to participate, or would we?
Typically, one of the factors that is considered in school of choice is progress toward graduation.
Okay.
And so when we, when we say yes or no to students that want to come here, we, we would meet with them or look at their current transcript such as it is if they were not living in our district and, and encourage them probably at this point to, yeah, so you can go to that.
Got you, okay. What do you need, what do you need to listen to?
Uh, yeah, more questions like this and then additional support as we go through the process of really building this, you know, for real, visiting other schools that have it, gathering more information and really putting a plan together for, this is what we want.
Yeah, I think, I think the next steps would be if the board is, is on, on board, would continue to do this work. The next steps would be to get together and us to plan what that would look like from an entry standpoint to what credits look like, what the curriculum looks like, where it would be housed, what would be called, staffing, all of those components, which will impact my policies, which then we'll start bringing to the board. As soon as we're ready, probably, it'll be a few months, but it'll take some time.
Let's see if we're swift.
Yeah, is there anyone that's opposed to have Dr. Vanderjeff, Jordan, any perceive this? Anyone opposed?
I'm not opposed to it at all. I have one question. If you looked at the monetary costs for something like this and how much of our existing infrastructure can we tie in and how much has to be added on?
I think, I think, if we look at, uh, if we lose, I'll say twenty students, we could like that to more of an FTE of a teacher. So if you're looking at forty students that potentially would have left, and it's gonna take two teachers to do this work, it's a push. Are we willing to spend a little bit more to keep our kids here to make sure they graduate with a Hudsonville diploma? That could very well be. I don't anticipate adding a dozen staff members to, to help out forty kids. Um, but we want to do what's necessary. So I, I think it's, it's, time will tell. We think, uh, we're looking at no volume. We could start with forty kids. It could be sixty kids in two years. It could be twenty kids in two years. And so I think we want to make sure that we find a location, administrative support, counseling support, um, academic supports, teaching support, and there's requirements to be highly, you know, highly qualified teachers and who can teach this and what component, and now they can have access to athletics and extracurricular and can they name a musical and can they go to the tech center? I mean, there's all those different factors. There's a lot that we want to try to iron out before we come back with a, a full plan, but.
We don't want to make it too attractive that you have more kids in that program than we have in another one.
This wouldn't necessarily be something that one would aspire to.
Right, right.
Yeah, but it would be, it would be something that we can say, which is better than what we can say now, which is.
Which doesn't.
Some, some may aspire to. It may be excellent.
Yeah.
So the, the financial, um, has, uh, has been a debate, I mean, for, for years. And there are schools that had big programs, like Mark mentioned Orion. And they just, and I know district, you know, districts in two other parts of the state too, where it really isn't the, the moneymaker that it was at one point when the state used to fund adult ed programs and you used to run other programs in it, not just high school alternative ed and credit recovery. So it's more, as Doug said, you just find that balance of the number of kids that left, you know, your normal high school staffing, and these classes do need lower class size. So it's, it's not really the moneymaker, and it's, we'll try to run it in a way where it's not a money loser. It'll just be, it'll be neutral. I mean, it's, it's, uh, there'll, there'll be some extra costs, extra support, but it's, uh, it, it wouldn't be something that would be marketed as a school of choice thing to, to make, make money. It just isn't, it's just that kind of.
Yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't answering the question.
No, no, no.
I get what you're saying too, Greg, and I think, um, it's, it just has to be thoughtful. You guys spend a ton of time doing this. I just don't want, I don't want this to become the program that people run to to get a diploma, right? And, and we got to maintain that bar, right, that we're known to have. And that's the ultimate diploma. Exactly, exactly. I think our kids still aspire to get an absolute diploma as well. Absolutely, yep. You guys are trying to implement, you know, if we're, when the FED doesn't do it, you're gonna be able to get all the great data and come up with a great plan. I mean, that's. So we'll make it our own. Yeah, we'll make it our own. Because there's gonna be, there are, there'll be things that will be deep taught in Hudsonville that I think that will benefit our kids.
And one benefit to, to ask people, if you could do this over again, what would you do differently?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, I think you have direction from the board.
Thank you. Thank you everyone.
All right, five-six building furniture, assuming it's the bricks.
Yes, Melanie.
Melanie, can I make a recommendation? That, that, um, after this, maybe you take a five-minute stretch break to put some rest, just to be able to use restroom.
It's like doing the last thing before washing.
Yeah. Take your time back.
We're gonna test out every chair.
Boy, it's already been tested. Something like that. Thank you. Um, I just want to say thanks to Melanie, several other people on this process. Melanie really has, um, she is now a furniture expert. Jordan, Jordan did this, uh, just let, we brought a recommendation last summer. And we did a lot of this. I would say Jordan is more the expert of the, uh, office furniture. So, I mean, he, they, they really set the template for the district. And we've used that to make this five-six building work, uh, easier. But now we have a, we have a district standard for office furniture that's, that really helped out this process. But Melanie in classroom furniture, she is correcting our experts many, many times, so I can't say, can't say enough about her work. But it is, it's really, it was really intense process, um, and you'll see it as we go through. You look at this, just, we're not gonna go here a lot, but just the lines in this. Melanie, Melanie has a story, literally, on, on every line, and I'm not, I'm not exaggerating. There, there's, she's got data, she's got thinking behind each one of these. So, um, just, I'll set up a little bit of the process and we'll, we'll pass this back and forth. But, uh, we started these meetings last June first was our, was our kickoff. So we, we knew it'd be a lot and, uh, but that was time we got out there. And then with, with all the tours and everything we did, we actually had students and staff go with us. Um, we, uh, we toured two local manufacturers and we think that was really useful. And, uh, Melanie.
So we started our tours last summer, got to take some students, um, elementary and some middle school students. And then we took teachers, fifth grade teachers, sixth grade teachers. And then we took some specials and elective teachers. So we went to, um, Hayworth and Steelcase. Those were the two big ones that we went to. Hayworth for more of like the office furniture. There's some really great pieces of furniture there. And, um, then we went to Steelcase as well. Got some ideas of what we kind of wanted in our classrooms and kind of like the wish list of items that we wanted in classrooms. And then we came back, started the school year, and we picked another committee of teachers, um, that went with us out to, we did some school visits. So we went to Sparta, which is a pretty new middle school. They have just been open in the last couple of years. So they have a lot of the new furniture. Um, then we went to East Kentwood, and then we went to Byron Center. And so we got to test out furniture. We got to talk to students about the furniture that are like using it every day, which was super great. Um, and then we came back and teachers once again, we like refined the kind of furniture that we would really like to test out for a pilot. Um, and then from there, I found out about other schools that maybe were more similar to our five-six building, um, Byron Center. Um, they are also in the process of building a new school, and they told me to go to their high school. So I went to their other building. They have a lot of brand-new furniture that we were specifically looking at for our five-six building. And then I also went to Granville. They started their pilot the first couple of weeks of the school year. So they already had a lot of the furniture that we were looking at in a pilot setting. And so I got to talk to the principals for both of those buildings and then talk to students again about what they liked. I got to talk to the teachers about what they liked. And then just to see the wear and tear on the furniture too was super helpful. Um, and then, so we got to pick out our pieces for the pilot. And then I also met with, um, all of our specials. Um, so I went and met with art, steam, and our music department uh, because they have unique furniture needs. And then I also met with our categorical programs for CI and ASD because we'll be housing those two programs there, as well as resource teachers. And so they have some, a little bit different needs in those classrooms. And so we worked with the architect. She picked out some pieces that we saw in some of our schools that we toured. And then from our factory tours over the summer. And she designed classrooms with those pieces of furniture. I took them, the layouts, talked through with them what they liked, what they didn't like, what they would like to see. We tweaked those designs, um, and then we purchased some pilot furniture. It was delivered after Thanksgiving. Um, and so we had it in all four of our Northside Elementarys. It started at Georgetown. It traveled. It traveled to Bower, then onward, and then it ended at Park. And so we got a lot of use out of the pilot furniture. Teachers got to try out like teaching stations. There's different types of teaching stations that we're looking at. And then the students got to try out different types of desks and chairs. The wobble stools are real fun. And then we brought it, then all the furniture moved to Baldwin. So it's really great. We had middle school students, even though they're not necessarily going to be going to this building, but because of their size, they also got to try out the pilot furniture. So it has a lot, had a lot of wear and tear as well in a really short period of time. And so we could see right away what we do not want. And I also got, yes, breakage. There are pieces that were definitely broken, like strings that were coming off of certain things. So we knew like we're not going to purchase that because it didn't last through a pilot. And then I also talked with custodians because they were the ones moving it into classrooms, moving it out. What did they notice that could potentially be a problem? So I got their feedback as well. And then once the pilot was done, we did send, I sent out surveys to students and to teachers. So they gave feedback on what they liked, what they didn't like. And they were all kind of narrowed in on the same pieces of furniture, which was actually pretty exciting that everybody focused on the same pieces. And so.
All right. So I, I guess that would be, and I think, I know Melanie would agree, that the main core of our meetings, we really couldn't have done it without Lee. I mean, Lee, Lee Arns, our, uh, facilities director, he, he just was, he helped us out in so many ways. Like that stuff that really, that breaks more often, yep, that'll break more often, you know? He was, he was really helpful, so. And, uh, lots, lots of meetings every two weeks.
Thanks.
Yes. So, um, so, you know, I don't know if you have any particular questions, but, um, each, the way this is set up, so it's, we kind of learned as we went from the, uh, because we had a couple of different formats for the high school projector furniture. But there's a page in each one, uh, there's two different documents. There's the budget document with the details. And then there is the, uh, our architect's GMB called this back with the graphics, the design playbook. So it's, it's all there and we literally, well, this is what we've done for, for a long time. So we can talk about each, each one of these pieces, but, um, I don't, I don't know if there's.
Are we going to be here tonight?
Yeah. I feel like we should go through the, like a typical classroom. That would be helpful. Because it's, and then if we talk.
Well, Pat, I'm going to maybe make a recommendation. You have, most of the classroom looks about standards you see in a classroom. A little bit updated somewhat furniture, but maybe some of the special ed, uh, classrooms that are unique. Because that's, that furniture looks different than what we traditionally would put in our room. Just a suggestion.
No, I, it's, that's good. Could we, can we just talk, like, this is what, because there's, it's the most, twenty, that's the biggest part of the cost. Can we just talk about what's in this standard classroom, standard classroom desk that will do the special ed classrooms?
So from our survey data, um, we actually trialed a couple of different heights of desks to give students that flexibility. Definitely fifth and sixth graders like to move. They don't like to sit all day. And so, um, we picked, actually with their feedback, even student feedback and teacher feedback, we are going with, um, a standard typical height desk. And then we're doing a standing height desk. So students can sit in a stool or, and it'll have a back on it. Or they can actually just stand and a lot of kids stood and they wanted to be at those desks too. So we're splitting the classroom on those two different height desks. Um, and then the chairs, they, um, there were some, it was really great to have the middle schoolers try out the chairs because some of them, um, were smaller and not big enough for our middle school kids. So the chairs that we picked, they do have a little bend to their back, so kids can actually have that like wrapping motion too, without tipping back, which is a big thing that middle school kids like to do as well. We are looking at for our teaching stations, um, going away from a traditional style desk where it can actually be a teaching center and they can have their computer with an Elmo, um, that connects to the projector. And then we've got an adjustable table because kids, they like to stand, that that would be where they do maybe small group intervention in their classes. So it's a table that you can take like a handle and you can raise it and you can lower it. It was definitely the most durable and, um, we could actually fit a lot of kids around that standing or seating. Do you want to go through a special one?
Yeah, I don't know this one, but like, the, the, our page numbers, the graphic, it didn't, uh, page any, but we've got one that says page thirty. One that says, there's a special ed, the CI, the ASD.
I can go through CI and ASD. It's on page twelve, I think, at the top. So in our ASD and CI classrooms, um, kids will be actually pushing out into gen ed, but they will also come back for more supportive instruction in those classrooms. And so we picked a variety of seating. So in there as well, we have some taller desks, um, that can actually be individual desks, but we can also break them apart. So we can move them. They can sit in a group or they can be separated. And then we picked some standard height desks. We also chose some tables where you could have two kids sitting there. And then, um, they have a little divider in the middle where you can put a whiteboard so they can have their own personal space, um, if they need to maybe not see what the other person is doing. And then we gave, in that classroom, teachers do a lot of small group instruction. And so we did stick with the, in the elementary buildings, we call them kidney tables or seat tables. Those are typically what elementary teachers use to work with small groups. Um, and that was kind of voiced from our special ed teachers, if they would still like to have that as like a teaching center. We have, there's a few teaching chairs in those classrooms as well that are pictured because we do have a lot of Paris support that goes into those classes. So they can actually have a comfortable chair. We sometimes don't think about the Paris coming in and working with our students every day and they're just grabbing random chairs or sitting on the floor. So we have that seating in there for them as well. And then we also did get some different types of foam, um, chairs. So sometimes in our ASD classroom, I'd say especially, they like to have their own personal space. So we did look at like a privacy nut that is, looks kind of like an egg and they can go in there and they can have that private space if they need it. And then, um, we also had, um, got a privacy screen to give them. So you could divide the classroom with a privacy screen. So you could have one thing going on on one side and you could be doing something different on the other side of the screen, but also, um, just privacy for students. And then the wobble stools. So the one that was chosen, it was the most popular by all the kids and it has not broke yet. So it was a bonus. You'll notice too on all of the, or in all the classrooms and in the offices, we picked, um, mobile pedestals. So this building, there's a lot of, um, unique learning spaces, like out in the middle of the classrooms. And so our teachers, they could go out and do testing with individual students or small groups of students. So these little pedestals, it's like, um, taking files, a filing cabinet on wheels with a handle and they can pull that with them and they can go test students. Because a lot of times they're carrying like multiple crates with all these files and they're trying to, and then the testing materials, they can all put it in this little cabinet and take it with them to where they need to go to test. And it can be used as a chair, multiple uses.
I have no idea how much stuff went into all of this. And as you're saying, it's like, oh my goodness, this is brilliant to have all these testing and to talk to Lee and so I appreciate that. My only question always is, is how quickly will this stuff date? Will we wear it out before it gets really dated? Because it's a little bit more modern, I guess I would say. But you, I mean, I don't know, if anybody has a feel for how often we're circulating furniture in the district, thinking about.
Well, certainly not often is enough. Yes, is, uh, we would like, we've got, we still have some original furniture in Malt. From that's a ninety-six build. So we, we buy this, we buy the materials that last a long time. There's still some original furniture in Georgetown.
So when we were looking at the desks, um, casters are really popular right now to move for mobility and moving. And, um, looking at them, a lot of them are now made of plastic. And so talking with the other principals and schools that have them on casters, they do break very easily. So we did not go with casters, but the desks that we have chosen, they're light enough that you can move them just as easily across carpet. And they'll put special belt on the bottom of them so we don't damage our carpet.
Slides.
Yes, they're called slides.
And it's, it's the unique spaces in this district, because this building has so many unique spaces in it that the furniture really follows the function. So there are some new things here that haven't, as Melanie explained, that haven't been done before, but it, it fits with the design building.
Cool. I'd like to go there.
Me too.
Looks pretty awesome.
It's been fun.
And you came in under budget.
We did. We cut some words on Friday.
Bye, bye, bye. Any questions for Pat and Melanie?
Thanks for the input. Well done.
A lot of, a lot of people. It is exactly eight to five, so we will take a five-minute break and reconvene at eight oh five. All right, it is eight oh six, so we will continue. Next up is our middle school science curriculum adoption.
Yes. So, uh, we just have a recommendation for you this evening. This is, um, uh, just for discussion purposes this evening, but to recommend a MYSTAR curriculum adoption with a caveat to that. And so as we get into this, you will notice that not only are some of the resources that we're recommending as part of our middle school curriculum, um, uh, MYSTAR, but there's also some what we call homegrown units. And so we'll dig into that a little bit. Our agenda is really to kind of go over the curriculum backstory. We're in a unique position with this curriculum adoption and the amount of time that we've been piloting it and some of the intentional vertical articulation of, um, some of the science standards as we have gone through this process, COVID-related, as well as then the gift of time and collaboration that has been afforded. We'll also go over what is MYSTAR, what are we talking about, why MYSTAR at HPS? We'll go over our MYSTAR units and dig a little bit deeper and then we'll end with the overall cost. So the curriculum backstory really began even before, um, I got here, as well as before Ryan was in his role. As a, he currently leads, um, the middle school science department. So he's the direct connect to that department. That started back in two thousand seventeen and even prior, the department was working to adjust curriculum to meet the next-gen science standards. For those of you who've been on the board, we, we've had that conversation before at the high school level, um, as well as the elementary level. When we were talking about the, um, adjustment of moving to those new standards, as well as then the assessment that goes along with that, which is MSF, et cetera. In two thousand and eighteen and nineteen, the science department reviewed two particular curriculums that were being used really across Ottawa County, Amplify being one of them and MYSTAR. MYSTAR was piloted largely due to cost effectiveness and really overall department, uh, consensus at that time. They then, in the area of sixth grade, um, they fully implemented MYSTAR in that year and they piloted in ecology, um, in that school year. And then really there was more of a blend still going on with piloting some of the MYSTAR units in that year, as well as continuing to use what we call homegrown units. So we had teachers who were, um, writing, writing their own units. And with the next-gen science standards, that became much more of a complex circumstance due to, uh, a lot of the elements of, uh, what we were hoping for within those standards under the area of instruction, and I think Brian will be getting to that a little bit. During the fall of nineteen twenty, uh, there was a lot of dialogue when I first arrived with that department. They were seeking, um, really some clarity around what direction were we going to move with a particular curriculum adoption? And really an overwhelmed feeling by the, the middle school staff that they were continuing to, um, rewrite units in order to align with next-gen science standards. And so we really brought in some consultation from the ISD. There's a science consultant at the Ottawa area ISD. And he walked us through using some particular rubrics to see if our homegrown units were really in alignment with some of the work that we wanted to ensure that we had in place from a curriculum resource, that aligned with the next-gen science standards. And so during some of that process, then we just continued to have dialogue as a, as a full middle school, um, science department. Really when we were looking at a curriculum review, those are all of the pieces that we look at and really reached some consensus that we wanted to move forward with a full pilot of the MYSTAR units at that time. And then, of course, we know that, uh, COVID happened in the middle of all of that. But really that ended up being, um, quite a gift because it allowed the teachers to move forward with a lot of clarity and ensure that the curriculum resources that they were using not only were meeting or rising to the level of the next-gen, next-gen science standards, but it also afforded us the opportunity to really do some vertical articulation. So sixth grade, ensuring that there was some clarity around what standards needed to be taught in sixth grade in order to move to seventh grade and eighth grade. But really the pivotal piece of the vertical articulation was it afforded some conversation between middle school and high school to occur. To say, are our students coming to you at the high school with the skills and knowledge that they need in the area of science to then just continue to grow and learn? And so we identified that there were a couple of gaps. And again, we'll speak to that when we get into some of the specifics of what you'll see, uh, within our curriculum recommendation at this time. And so I think that takes us to the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. We developed curriculum maps and pacing for each grade level. That really articulates some of the pieces that I've talked to at this time.
So you'll, you'll have seen, when you look at our, our middle school websites, like a lot of our curriculum maps are in transition as we've really dug into academic collaborative teams. Some of them are way outdated and like science, if you look at science now as kind of an exemplar of what we hope everybody will get to. Um, so there's been a lot of work done. You know, being at the high school when a lot of this work was going on, we were still connected in some way. I was connected in some way, but not directly overseeing. And we really steered that to, each grade level now has the same documentation, the same pacing, the same curriculum map. And everybody district wide at that grade level is using, uh, those, those resources to guide instruction. So it's been really powerful. So MYSTAR, just so we have a little background, um, is a middle school curriculum that supports both the NGSS science standards and the state, Michigan State standards. It's really good at the science and engineering practices and the real world issues and presenting units like an overarching phenomena or, um, question, inquiry question. And this is something that the ISD uses regularly. I'm noticing that that says the same thing twice, so I apologize for that. But this is something that the ISD multiples other schools in Ottawa area ISD have piloted this program. Some school districts have implemented it full bore across sixth, seventh and eighth grade. What we find is as kids are transitioning from elementary to middle school, they, they are really now diving into what does it mean to be a scientist and how do we do scientific process? And MYSTAR is really, really strong at the sixth grade level. Where we noticed some of those gaps was more the seventh and eighth grade where we're starting to get into more deeper dives into things like chemistry. And that is a big unit that we found gaps for vertical articulation. So that, and, and the real world hands-on stuff wasn't as strong at the seventh and eighth grade level. Where we felt our already utilized or new homegrown units that our teachers were developing were supplementing the areas that MYSTAR was maybe not as strong in, um, to make this robust program that we now have. So we did look at two, um, programs. Amplify is the other one. Amplify had a lot of really good science, technology, engineering practices, um, that were virtual. There was a lot of tech piece with that. It was super expensive. So there were pieces of that that were really strong, but overall the consensus from the department and those that were involved in that process was that MYSTAR had more to offer in terms of a framework and a structure that then we could supplement and build to make what we currently have. We then went through, um, the teachers picked that through the process. We did go through the curriculum adoption, uh, paperwork, um, and process when we went through that. We have that, we can share at a later date if need be. The ISD then provided training. The ISD then provided training that Amy mentioned in that timeline around MyStar and other districts shared their experience with MyStar, with our team. I talked about some of these, but the strengths that I do want to make sure I outline are the overarching unit challenge questions or those phenomena that prompt the learning is really strong in MyStar. They have common assignments and assessments that are already built that teachers now can utilize, and we're giving the same assignments where we're using MyStar units district-wide, which has been super powerful. We are also, we have also shifted to that our homegrown units are common assignments and assessments district-wide as well, even if we're adding to a MyStar unit. And it's really closely aligned with NGSS, so it's been a really powerful tool in that transition. The reason for integrating the homegrown again, it just lacks some of that independent practice for students that we feel is important for them to learn on how to be a scientist, how to go through the scientific process, to do some of that lab and exploration, inquiry-based learning that's part of science. And the vertical alignment, we were noticing in the first couple of years of the pilot that kids were going to the high school lacking some skills that they had had prior with our own homegrown units. So we worked closely with Greg Jordan, the science department chair at the high school, and their team on trying to make sure we're still embedding those skills within MyStar. And that's happening more at the seventh and eighth-grade level. The sixth grade has really been a standalone MyStar adopted. Like that is a fully implemented MyStar curriculum for sixth grade. There are slight tweaks and modifications through that, but not many. So I'm not going to go through all of these, sorry, I'm driving, but you are displaying. All of these things in detail right now. I know you've had time to look at them, and obviously, I'm here to answer questions. But this first graphic really shows the units that we've identified that we're using MyStar with and what standards associate with them, so you can kind of see that breakdown. And then the next slides, the next few slides break down each unit per grade level. So it seems like, you know, in some grade levels, it's like, wow, there's only, you know, for heredity, there's five lessons, and for some, there's 10. The units are much longer, much more robust, but the assessments are broken up in chunks throughout the unit. So a unit might take an entire quarter at the middle school. So that just breaks down some of the specifics. They are linked, but they're not in your packet. Obviously, if there's more questions that you have, but we would give something like this to a new teacher or somebody who's teaching the course for the first time, and they could click on that, and it has literally every resource that our team is utilizing. So there's been a tremendous amount of work from our staff to put this together in the package that we're teaching both at Riley and Baldwin. So at this point, are there any questions about the curriculum itself, the content being covered? Anything that I've said thus far? Because the last bit is just about cost.
Just a quick question. It just seems weird to me that they were so good at their sixth-grade curriculum, but it sounds to me like they started to slack off in seventh and eighth. And I just find it so interesting that you have looked at that and said, that's not good enough for us, and have stuck in your own stuff. Pyri says, why aren't we not marketing curriculum ourselves? Obviously, we could do that, but has there ever been...
You might take it out, no?
You know, and does anybody else feel that way that is purchasing this curriculum? And just, to me, it's just fascinating that, I don't know, it's not really a question, but it's a comment, and like, what's the deal there?
I think a lot of it just stems to the pride that we have in our organization and the level of excellence that we have for our kids. And our teachers, especially in the older grade levels, had a harder time letting go of some of the things that were really strong and had like the data to support the transition to high school. And we found that it really lacked the science, like the doing of science in the upper grade levels, where at sixth grade, you're really just kind of making that transition. So they're doing a lot of labs, and they're doing a lot of hands-on stuff, but it's not to the level that seventh and eighth grade we had required. So that's kind of where, in conversations that I've had with the team since I've been leading this for the last couple of years, they've really dug in. And it has been a true collaboration with the high school team to make sure that we're filling the gaps that they see and we're sending them there ready to do that higher-level science learning.
So is that fair to say, then, Ryan, that our expectations are higher than what MyStar was? Is it something higher than something?
Yeah, I think the intent of MyStar curriculum, right, is to be something that can be utilized everywhere. But we are taking it to that next level by adding our own pieces and trying to make our kids scientists in that particular content area.
Almost to the point of just making it more robust.
Yeah. It's deeper. It's richer.
I mean, if we had to look at our science program here, Hudson, this is one of the things we're going to run. So I want to say, we've got some really experienced staff, so this is really cool to see how much they've put into it. I want to keep this in mind, because they're not going to be around for forever. So whatever we can do to continue to pour into the next generation that's going to come up behind them to ensure that we keep those standards high.
Absolutely.
Whether it's marketing it ourselves, legal curriculum, or whatever.
I think that's one of the pieces as well to note, is that prior to this process, there weren't documents like this that existed across the district. And so sometime we were getting in, although our teachers are amazing, Anne might be doing something different in her sixth-grade classroom than my sixth-grade classroom because we're at two different middle schools. And so that just speaks to what we know about the research around guaranteeing a viable curriculum and equitable access for her sixth graders, as well as my sixth graders, and just ensuring that we have a system that supports and provides all of the resources and information. Because if I'm a new teacher, and Anne has been here and has had all the knowledge and skill and all the training and so forth, that's also another equity piece. We need to make sure that we are organized and in a space where we can create that consistent access to the quality education that we expect and our kids deserve.
It also is creating that fluidity, like this is obviously a fluid document that as our teams do a unit or they teach a unit and they're looking at data, they're making decisions on the multitude of resources to narrow that down to what has been the most effective. So that's part of the reason why, like, putting that all in your packet would have been overwhelming, because it is fluid. But the content is going to remain the same. And this is now a tool that we have that we're trying to model for other departments to be able to have these resources for longevity. We do recognize that, you know, there will be turnover in the next few years just with staff. And there are years of service in Hudsonville, and we want to make sure that we have a solid program to continue forward.
I mean, some of the top me, you know, their time is running short here in the district. So yeah, this is great to see the work that's gone through.
So just real quick, so the main concepts that are covered here, those are concepts that were covered prior to the pilot. This is just a way of packaging it up in a way that is very simple? Or are there significant differences here than were done before?
That's a good question. There are some units that are new based on next-gen science standards. There's a lot more of the cross-cutting concepts in next-gen that weren't there before. So some things have gone away that they are getting than at high school. But again, the supplementing is to really make it more robust and more of a hands-on experience for our kids, teaching them how to do science. And then some of those, like chemistry is a unit that is not in MyStar, that is fully homegrown in the current system because there is a direct correlation to gaps that they were noticing at the high school. So those conversations continue to happen.
Other questions for Amy and Ryan?
Officially made it past bedtime, so.
Say, oh, shoot, I'm just going to sit down and watch TV.
Are you talking to us or what?
Oh.
Oh, yeah.
Get back to Pat?
Yeah.
So there's an annual subscription fee, which is $300, and returning teachers are $800. So there's been some grant opportunities through the Ottawa Area ISD that have allowed these costs to be minimal. So our district payment due to those scholarships in the past couple of years have been $750. So again, minimal, and we anticipate, hopefully, those grant opportunities to continue. However, if not, you can see that the lack of scholarships then would put us right around, I'm doing some quick math, over $4,500, yeah.
And the new teacher cost is higher too, because there's the training modules that they then have to go through. We had a couple of teachers doing that this year, being new, and it's through the ISD and Mike Fine, and they worked through a very strategic process with. So it's been very good.
It has been, and that to the point of the training also is ensuring that any new teacher is getting that next-gen science standard training at a similar level as well. Thank you.
Dr. Banerjee, please.
Yeah, so there's been a kind of a request, and I'm asking the board if we can have maybe revisit the conversation about subcommittees with only two areas. Number one, there's a lot of finance work that I think Pat would like to dive into with board members. And it's would cause for extending these meetings even longer than they already are. And I don't know if that would be conducive to the entire board. So asking for maybe the board to consider a finance subcommittee. And then there are areas, when it comes to human resources, that we cannot discuss in an open meeting, that to be able to run past some HR items with the board. Most of those items you'll see in the consent agenda, because we can't discuss them in public, and we can't also go into closed session for those conversations, because the employee would have to request it, and they don't. A lot of us have the leave of absences, for example. I know we talked a little bit about it. Barbara Nick, we talked about it the other day. We'd still like to maintain policy conversations as a whole with the board, curriculum conversations, as you've seen in the last couple of hours, as a whole with the board, and the government relations to be as a whole with the board in legislative updates. But to really consider those two items that we might be able to do kind of a hybrid of, you know, we had committees prior to a couple of you being on the board, or three of you being on the board, we had subcommittees. And then to maybe go into discussions and maybe go to hybrids, we'll have subcommittees for two areas, and then vote in there. And both of those conversations would still have to come to the board for a full vote. For example, if there's an employee that's requesting a leave of absence, traditionally, Anne would meet with the subcommittee, have conversations about that, that can be had. But then that still has to go back to the full board to accept that leave of absence if that is a request. Same thing with the finance. You still see all the finance that still comes to the full board. Most of those items are in consent agenda, go from there. But really, continue to dive into committee as a whole when it comes to curriculum and it comes to government relations and policy. So throwing it out there.
Ebe, for Dr. Banerjee, and how you feel about a couple of subcommittees?
I think as long as we have some sort of reporting of information option, not necessarily formal, but maybe some, I don't know how long the committees will meet. It'll be once a month, so that we have a general idea as to what the committee has been looking at. Maybe copy of the agenda sent to the rest of the board, or I don't know how that would work, Doc.
Yeah, you know, and some of the committees might not meet, but once a year, if there's a need. I can't anticipate from a new jar standpoint when there's going to be a need to meet on a regular basis. Finance might meet more regularly. I would, maybe what we've done in the past in which the chair of that subcommittee, in this case, I would think Greg would probably chair the finance subcommittee, that's just because he's the treasurer, and that Greg would give an update on what was discussed at the subcommittee meeting. From an HR standpoint, whoever serves as the HR committee chair might give the update regarding that. If this is something you would entertain, then I would reach out to all of you and say, which are you interested in either or neither or both, you know, that kind of conversation. It'd still be nice to have the great people. You know, we don't want seven people that want to be in one committee, and nobody wants to be in another. But to have that conversation about where did you feel you fit? And maybe that's a bad way to put it, but that would just be the idea. Maybe that'll address.
You know, when I met with Pat, that's one of the questions that I asked him as we spent a couple of hours together and we were a lot of different things. And I also know from attending the meetings over the last year that there was some contention over some of the subcommittees. I think that personally speaking, I believe that this kind of helps cut the baby in half a little bit. There are some things when it comes to finance that are pretty thadder-driven, cut, dried, art is, you know, subjective and those types of things. So I would be in favor of something like that, with the caveat that if anyone felt like something was going on behind closed doors and they weren't a part of it, then we could, you know, reconsider that. But I think that that's appropriate request, and one that I would be willing to support.
I'm good with it. It makes sense, especially for the HR standpoint, some of the things that need to get discussed. So I have that for sure. I'm all for it.
And I completely agree that there might be conversations that would be HR-related that are meant for the full board that can be held in a public setting or from a finance standpoint. Furniture was a perfect example tonight. You might run that furniture conversation past the subcommittee in advance so that there might be questions they can weed out to address it to the full board when it gets to that point, but just an example.
Other feedback from other board members?
I support.
I can live with it. I just want a very detailed report from each committee.
Hearing, detail.
No, I think that's appropriate, and the presentation would be very detailed also. Subject to questioning in a public setting, so I have no problem with that whatsoever.
A lot violated in HIPAA laws. Definitely. I mean, we wouldn't provide, you'd be the report from the chair, not from us, but.
So on the hearing consensus from the board that everyone's given some clues?
We'll start the round, just those two. We'll start the round work to ask and seek input from the board. No need to start tomorrow, but over time, try to work in some of those conversations to know if Amy has a conversation she needs to run past, who to run it past. Pat has the same situation, who to run it past. We'll ask for to put three board members on each one, and somebody gets out easy.
It seems like we get two or three finance committees a year.
And a lot of those discussing if there was a leave of absence.
Yeah. That's really good. Just came to have those in public. Okay, thank you.
Dr. Banerjee, student council work presented.
All right, so we get a student council report every board meeting. And there has been some desire that I have heard from some community members even that it would be maybe helpful to have a student council rep on the board. Not voting, but sit at the board meetings. I know many districts that do it. I know we did it in our former district. They wouldn't be at work sessions, which they would probably enjoy, but in a traditional meeting, they would be up there with the board. They would give their input, their update, as they normally would. And then there could very well be items that you, as a board member, might look down the line and say, you know, policies coming across from the board, and you might say, what do you think of this policy? I've worked with student council, if I'm the right person, maybe that's something we could try as we close out this school year, and then really implement it starting next school year, that every board meeting, they would be there as a rep, as a connection between the board and the students, which this came up in a focus group the other day, was really having the student voice be more connected with the board. So this is another request. It works pretty nice. It works really nice if board meetings are not four hours long for that student. And they're very well could be a topic that is going to make the board meeting long. and as president, you could dismiss the student council rep if it's the night before exams, or if there's something going on, like this might be a little bit, once we get through X, Y, and Z, you would dismiss the student rep, not to exclude them, but simply to respect their time.
Actually, most kids stay up late in the meetings, so.
Work session? No. Work sessions, closed sessions, no. Simply more than just a report, and then they leave.
Yeah, I think if we had one, I'd want it to make a worthwhile endeavor for them, and I guess give, give me as a board member some sort of a parameter about, okay, what does that look like as I interact with that student? You know, is it just that night and they're sitting next to you, and, you know, you say, hey, you have a question, or what do you think, or what exactly that would look like?
I think you will know right away how to manage that with the student. I do. I think you'll see from a student standpoint, they're pretty quiet still, they sit up there, but a lot of times it's the interactions before and after board meetings that just really connect the board more with our student population. And I know it's one student, but it's a unique relationship that you'll form over the course of the year. And they could have a substitute, and the passing of the baton, if you will, to the next person is always interesting. So two of them will be up there for a meeting. It's actually pretty, it's pretty neat. Now, just ask students, they'll do it, but that's a whole other issue.
I'm sure we won't have any problem getting involved.
Well, there's a system, there's a structure that they have when it comes to student council, and who is their public relations person. I did already meet with the student council after our discussion. I did meet with the student council representative, the teachers, and talked a little bit about that, and they said that would be, that would be great. That'll experience for them, and they feel a relationship with that, with the student body of them. Okay? Look how fast those two have generated.
Keep going. Our E-rate funded technology purchases.
So we have, we have two here, and just a little, just a tiny bit of background. This goes all the way back, this E-rate goes all the way back to the Telecommunications Act of 1996. That's that little fee you see on your home bills. We benefit from that. And it's really, we get a 50% reimbursement on a few things. There are a lot of schools that get a 90% reimbursement on most things, like most, most of their items, they're far higher reimbursement. That, that all goes by your census poverty rate. So Hudsonville does a really smart thing. They've done this long before I got here, but they, they've kind of worked, I don't know. Trying to keep it checked. But Hudsonville has, for years, processed their, their fiber maintenance through this program, and most schools don't do it. They'd say it's only half of $17,000, but it's by the first recommendation, that really is our fiber maintenance contract, and I was going to mention it to Ryan when he was here, but we have squirrels with diamond-tipped teeth on the northern part of our district. They, we cannot get cheating on that cable that cannot keep those squirrels out. And it's, they chew the heck out of it, and so we use this contract a lot, and it works, it works really well. So it's a smart thing for Hudsonville to do, and the department's been doing it for a while. The next, the big one is really, most, most of this is between Jeff's staff, and Jeff Smucker has done a tremendous job maximizing our E-rate discount. So you see in there wireless access points, network switches, those uninterrupted, uninterrupted power sources that go into building to back up the routers, the UPSs, and the big lever data system, UPS, needs to be replaced. But this goes through bidding, and it needs to be, I believe there's a box that has to be checked on the application that says it was board-approved. So we wouldn't normally bring something to you that's $17,000, but it checks a box. Yeah, the, I, we didn't get a lot of bids, but it is, it satisfied the E-rate purchasing process. I think we had another bidder for the, for the service, but I don't think we, we didn't have, we had two bidders. We had two bidders for the big project. We thought we'd get more, but we didn't. And so what happens is, we purchase these items with bond funds, and then we get a 50% reimbursement from this program, federal program, and then we, those dollars go back in the bond fund. So it lets us, lets our bond dollars go farther, and they're all items we would need for those buildings anyways. Nice program. We did this last year for the items going into the high school freshman campus connector and the 506 building. We took it at about, about the same time last year. So any questions?
Any questions you have?
Thank you.
Both will also come to the board at the important.
Next up, we have MDE survey. Yes. So. So you'll see in your packet, you had the opportunity, I think, to review the survey a couple of weeks ago, but now this evening is a little bit more of a presentation about the whole process. And so really, the reasons why we're going through this process again of some membership selection, our former co-chair stepped down. We do have some members who have children who graduated from Hudsonville Public Schools, and that is one of the requirements that we have those members on, that members on the board are parents of HPS that we need to reevaluate. Some members have stepped down from their role for any number of reasons. Staff are in different roles. So for example, the Cole Ball, who is here as our library media specialist, she was formerly a fifth-grade teacher and served on the Sex Ed Advisory Board, and our fourth-grade teacher moved to a third-grade position. And so we need to replace those roles. We also have a district nurse now who needs to be added to our Sex Ed Advisory Board, and by way of reminder that, that membership list does need to be Hudsonville Public School Board approved. And so the process that I'll walk you through here in the evening is really, the goal is to create a process to ensure community representation on our Sex Ed Advisory Board. There's three parts. One is the MDE survey. Number two is an application for those who are interested. Based on the final question on the survey will be, the only modification to the MDE survey will just be a question stating, would you be interested in serving on the Sex Ed Advisory Board? And then I will follow up with a membership application, which we'll look at this evening. And then finally, the third step is a rubric to identify members to fill the missing roles. So the roles that we need, I, I do need a co-chair, and I do have one individual who has expressed interest, who's currently a Sex Ed Advisory Board member, who has expressed interest, and so I will be sitting down in a meeting with him and discussing that, that position a little bit further at this time. We will be looking for three students to fill the role, and then maybe two to four parents with a question mark. And the caveat to that is, one of the roles that we need to fill is a clergy needs to be on our Sex Ed Advisory Board, and that person has stepped off of that committee. And so I would also say that that number is a little bit flexible, because as we get into the survey, when we look at the committee needing to be representative of our larger community, and the process that we'll work through for that, if there are, as an example, if there is a shift in some perceptions in regards to sex education in our schools, reproductive health in our schools, then we may need to add more to ensure that there's equal representation, because we're taking this moment to kind of recalibrate and update that membership. And then we need a fourth grade teacher. So the timeline for the process, I did meet with the Sex Ed Advisory Board, our current membership last week, and kind of walked through this process and answered several questions that they had, and they had some great suggestions about things to just slightly modify or tweak, and I'll try to lift those here this evening with you as well. But my hope is really pending your feedback this evening in the process, to get this process started, and so to share the MDE parent survey, that window opening tomorrow, hopefully, and then closing in about a week. And then following up with that Sex Ed Advisory Board membership application to those interested and current. So I think that as we get into the rubric, it will make sense that I would want to send that application to our current members. It would be modified just to include some of the questions that we use on the rubric, because that will ensure that we're creating that balanced representation. I think that will become more clear as we dig into the actual tools. And then the week of March 20th, reviewing those applicants using the rubric that we'll review, and that is with the current administrators who are on the Sex Ed Advisory Board, as well as the co-chair. So I hope to identify that role, even though it wouldn't be board-approved until the full membership list comes to all of you. My hope would be to include that individual role in that process as well. It is quite labor-intensive, from what I understand, when the Sex Ed Advisory Board was first formed, that was before I got here, but that, that was quite a labor-intensive process. And then the week of March 20th, to notify the applicants, we would then come together on April 11th for a number of reasons, for a Sex Ed Advisory Board meeting, and then request full Hudsonville board. I'm distinguishing because they're both comp boards, and one is a committee and one is you, but I'm trying to distinguish, to for formal board approval, your approval on April 13. So the first piece is really the MDE survey tool. Really just wanting to take any questions. I have not modified this tool in any way. I have, as far as the questions or the content here, I have put it into a Google survey, which would be what would be sent out. I'm sharing it in this format with you, because it's just easy to see the questions. One of the pieces that came up at the Sex Ed Advisory Board meeting last week was they just wanted to make sure that in the introduction that would go to our parent community, that we were clear that the topics contained in this MDE survey are not necessarily part of our curriculum. Just to make sure, because there are some questions there that could create, like, what, we're teaching this in school, and now you're asking me what my opinions are about this. But just to be clear, that this is just a Michigan Department event survey that we would like to send in its entirety to just get some perspective from our overall community about some of these topics. Questions do you have about the tool?
So is it all, who, who's it going to?
All parents in the district office.
The last two items, additional topic, one and two, there's nothing new we've added to the survey, just to quote this from the Michigan Department.
Again, that one question would just be, would you like to serve on the Sex Ed Advisory Board? And then if it's a yes, please send me an application, or no, I'm not interested.
Amy, I know that the committee had it for a couple of years. What stimulated this meeting? Did the state come down with something, or?
No, no, I think that really the obligation is to meet on a regular basis, and so some of that was interrupted by some COVID realities, by some of the membership, and so now is the time to just get back at it, and we want to make sure that we are complying with all the expectations.
Just for a little background for some of the newer members, when the state came down quite some years ago, and there was talk about whether we needed to have Sex Ed, how that worked, the requirement, no one is required to do Sex Ed at all, but if you do Sex Ed, there are certain components that the state requires. So some of the questioning and some of the conversation is a requirement if you're going to teach Sex Ed at all. So just as a little bit of a background for those who haven't been part of this, just so you know where part of this is coming from, because I think once you realize that even the makeup of the committee was designated through legislation, it helps to understand why we're choosing individuals at certain grade levels, parents, and clergies, and nurses. So that's where that all originated from.
Any other questions about the tool? I have talked too much this evening. Okay. Again, you'll, you'll know in your packet, there's an application there, fairly basic questions in regard to their interest. However, the piece, it doesn't look like it's going to work correctly, so.
It's in your packet, though.
Yeah, so if you would maybe just draw your attention to some of the questions that you'll notice, let me find the page number, beginning on page six, you'll notice that questions 13, 14, 15, 16, 17 are all questions that are also on the MDE survey. And so that is the piece that we'll draw out, and you'll see also correlated on the rubric. So those questions, we will have 2018 data that we will look back at to see what percentage of parents requested, or their perceptions were that they thought that content should be taught in elementary, or middle school, or high school. We'll have that data, and then we'll also be able to align this year's data, and then we'll also have the particular members who are currently, these would be the questions that I would also ask our current members, as well as then any new members in this membership application. So that, that leads itself into the particular rubric as well. Any questions about that? And then finally, the rubric. So this rubric does have some components. You'll also see that in your packet, not loading correctly here, but some of the components of that, the top part in particular are from MDE guidance around application questions, the criteria, whether it meets the full criteria, or does not meet the full criteria. I'll make that a little bit bigger. And then, as, as mentioned, it moves into some of the questions that correlate with the MDE survey and the membership application as well. And so each, as, as we move into the point of reviewing all of the membership applications, this rubric would be used then for final determination, knowing that we want elementary parents, middle school parents, high school parents, some from the north side, some from the south side, some lower L, some upper L, all of those criteria, that's the piece that, that becomes a little bit more complex, also knowing then that we also need clergy represented and so forth. And those are some of those lethal mandates that Don mentioned. Any questions?
So the idea here is that the, the, this membership application, there's, there's fields in this membership application to allow you to determine whether, like, what, and each of them evolves along the rubric?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. How do you go about finding the clergy and community staff, or community health provider? Is there a question, that's kind of what I was getting, is there a question in the application that gets to that?
It's a bigger task.
Is there? Okay, got it.
I think it says something about, yeah, are you clergy, community health, or district staff?
There is, got it. So the clergy has to be a parent in the district as well?
That's what we're trying to do. Is it, if, if, if we cannot find a parent who is also clergy, who would like to serve in this capacity, we do have the potential to find community members as well. But at this point, we're seeking parents. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you probably hear from me again any problem when I bring back recommended membership list? Great request.
The two trip requests, one is soon, and one is not soon. First one is Boys Ball Evolve, trip to Indiana for a tournament coming up in March, which is standard for the request for the board. Normally, I like to share these with the board before it comes out, or for approval. I don't know if you have any questions about that. That's the first one. And the second one is a trip to Puerto Rico, using EF tours, which we've used multiple times. I know I've been on EF trips before. That's for the summer of 2025, so planning ahead. But also, you know, fundraising opportunities for a couple of years for kids, as well as notification. There's a lot that goes into the EF tours that take place, so they're really looking ahead. So don't have, don't know if you have questions on either one. I like to share these with the board in the work sessions. I like to share these with the board in the work sessions. If there are questions, we can get them addressed prior to approval and we put them on the set agenda of March 9.
Any questions for the trip request?
Volleyball, read it.
Volleyball needed the request? Yeah, they're going to ask, the approval will be on the 9th of March and their trip is on 17th, so. We're getting there. We've made some strides in getting trip requests in that day. This wasn't the normal practice a long time ago, so we're getting there. People now know, get it in. I know a couple coming up to Ohio. Yep, so they're going to want to make that request. Now, keep in mind, if it's a day trip, it's not required. It's an overnight trip out of state, takes board approval. So we will ask that, if you know people, which I know you do, if you want to ask them to get their stuff in, it would not be the, it won't be the last time that we get a request the day of a board meeting and have to send out information to the board prior to a board meeting, so.
We'd actually get a special meeting one time.
We did, we did. There are two requests here, do not be surprised if there's a third probably by the time we get to March 9th, so.
By the end of the year, they're all screening.
Well, it's just any trip. You forget that it doesn't have to be board approved, so.
All right, and last but not least, we have our ruler parent survey.
So I'm going to turn over to Mandy in just a minute here. We've been having conversations with the board about getting as much information so the board can make a decision regarding a recommendation regarding the ruler curriculum. Traditionally, as some of you know, these requests would come to the board in the December timeframe, so that if we have to make adjustments or we need to change curriculum, that we'd have time to redraw that. Because of the change in the board, we did not. But now we'd like to bring it back to the board so we can make a final decision regarding where we are with our social and local curriculum that we're using in grades K through five. We did survey all of our staff. You've seen some of that data. We provided a lot of information regarding what our staff feel regarding ruler. We would like to send a survey out to the board. I did get a chance to send this to you a couple iterations. The second one was a little bit different. There's, I would like to maybe address a couple questions on here that did come up as areas maybe we could talk about tonight as a full board. The first one is about putting your name and last name and your child's name on the survey. Some will say that it might reduce people filling out the survey because they're afraid what could be tied to them. Others will say that if you don't put a student name on, you could have what we had before, where people from all over the country can fill out the survey. There are ways to tie a survey to what we consider to call an IP address, which means we can limit one per IP address, but there are ways that I can tell you, if our kids can figure out a way around it, I guarantee you we have some other people that can figure out a way around that. Just a conversation, I did ask a couple parents in the district to look at the survey, asking them what their thoughts were. Would you feel comfortable putting your name down? Or do you feel, there are some surveys, quite frankly, that we don't want parent name because it could tie to them. Quote unquote, I might say controversial, but it could be some surveys that ask different questions. Asking a couple of parents, again, I asked three, I did not ask three. So said, what are your thoughts? And their response was that this doesn't seem like a survey that I would have a problem putting my name down. If we remove it, we might have multiple responses from a household, people from all over the country. I don't, we can't control that. Right, wrong, or indifferent. If we keep it on there, it could limit people filling it out. Either way, we could have a validity issue with the data regardless, but it'll still get us data. I think traditionally, most people will fill it out in good faith. It's the world we live in with technology. We looked at another option. I want to credit Nick for kind of thinking, is there a way around this puzzle? And we talked through it, I think I sent you an email this afternoon, kind of addressing some of that. It was a little bit more of a hurdle to jump through regarding where we are with our current Power School program. Just trying to come up with ideas. So I would say that was one of the items that, should we or should we not include this on the survey? I'm open for any suggestions.
Is there an option to distribute this at parent future conferences to avoid having to deliver this work?
Yeah, so I think conferences are tonight, right?
And Wednesday.
Tonight and Wednesday, so that adds a challenge. That's correct. And to some degree, there was a question that I did, that did come up with some parents that, I'm only there for 10 minutes, I don't have time to fill out this. I think we'll get a good response, and I think that's what we're looking for. And one time we sent it out, it was in a newsletter, and we had like 150 responses out of the number of parents. You can imagine that elementary, there are more parents than that. When we sent it out to all the parents, we got, I think we got close, how many, do you remember how many? Like 550. So the volume is there, it just, there's always going to be that question of who filled it out, and did they do it with good intent or not? So then, and again, it doesn't matter, we just want to make sure the board has what you would like to see prior to a recommendation that we'd like to bring to you.
I know, my personal experience has been just with doing surveys, and I know this isn't research, and I know we don't come with IRB, but you typically don't make it a required field for people to put a name, and certainly not a child's name. If I had strong feelings against ruler, and if that was required, I would not fill it out, just because I don't know if there could be any ramifications for me and my family. So for me personally, I am not in support of including names. What that does to our return rate, I'm not really sure, but it sounds like we had 150 or 500. I'm just not comfortable with that, based on my experience.
I wouldn't mind if the student's name or the parent's name, I think that it could be skewed one way or the other, that we don't know which way they're going to go. I think that I would just, I would like to prefer not to have names associated with, we'll take our chances on which way it's skewed.
Well, we're not, there's no student name on it.
Further down.
The third is technically, the way it's formatted, it's further down.
I think from a best practice standpoint, you'd go no names. And that's why, yeah, we tried, we have some limitations with Power School. I was hoping there's a way to be able to send it through Power Schools, so the parents don't have to log in and all of that, but we're constrained by that. While the questions themselves aren't so controversial or whatever, the topic is, and this is like the topic, so I think I would support no names. Again, we're going to have to interpret the data with caution, get it, but I think we're better off doing it that way.
What other, okay, what other, and again, it doesn't matter to me. Less questions for people to answer, right?
Another thing I was thinking is, and again, everybody has an nefarious intent, this would stop them, but I'm wondering if like on our MDE survey where we say, you must be a parent in the district, parent or children in the district, maybe in the beginning of the survey, say, for quality control purposes.
Yeah, we can put some of those measures in place.
Please mark X's box indicating that you are the parent of the district. And again, it's not going to stop someone with malicious intent, but I think if there's someone saying, well, maybe I'll have me and my wife both, now we could vote without, then at least it's on them for trying to cheat the system.
Well, questions two and three would kind of address that, because they, it asks, please indicate that elementary building your child or children attend, and then the grades that they attend, but it doesn't say Hudsonville. That's true.
Well, we can add that in, but no matter what you do, someone's going to fill this out, but that's okay.
Whatever, I want someone to be responsible for it. They're not marking the box and they should have, or they have a little wrong. Maybe that's just my sense of justice.
Any other?
That's why I just resist any tracking of that kind, even if that be addressed over the city, any kind of tracking.
And I guess that begs the question as to who's going to see these surveys and what that individual would be expected to do with their information. So I guess, I don't see that as much of a legitimate question as, or comment as you would, Nick, that said, the standard protocol typically is not to ask for names. So for that purpose alone, I would never question the person collecting the data, or that someone on our staff would say, yeah, did you know their child? I will not put that on our staff.
Now, what you could do is at the bottom of the survey, you could put, if, you know, sometimes you take a survey, if you would like additional information or would like someone to contact you, you put your name and how to be contacted down, that that's if they want you to contact them. You can have that on the survey. But Nick, is that best practice as you do that?
I know, I guess I'd like to hear more about best practice, because I've done a lot of surveys, but they're all different, so I don't quite know.
When you're talking again, we're talking about this subject matter, we want this.
Yeah, I'm not arguing that, I just don't know the best practice. That came up twice, and I don't, for the surveys that we've done, and they vary based on the content, so I.
I just know from having done a lot of research, that you do not put names, everything is done anonymous. You would never get this through, and I know this isn't research, but you would never get this through an IRB if you had a name.
No, the content itself required an IRB. So I just didn't know what that, it just maybe wanted to hear more.
Yeah, we can talk more offline, but for this purpose.
What's your assessment of the aesthetic? I know I mentioned it, but your assessment of this is pretty right, and a lot of folks talk about it.
Well, at our last meeting that we talked about survey, we had a community member get up and speak about how many times they filled it out openly. So I don't know, I can't answer that. We will send it out to our elementary parents. We will ask them to, and I think a majority of our parents would respect that, to fill it out in good faith. I can't control the outliers, and maybe the outliers will come out in the next. I don't, I don't know. A lot of times you also look at, there's other metrics we can use when you get, you know, 38 responses that are identical at the same timestamp. We don't have that metric when it comes to Google Forms. We do when it comes to Survey Monkey, Stephanie and I were talking about that earlier today. So it's just, I just want to make sure the board has accurate information about what our parents are saying, because I believe that's what we want to know, not what anybody is saying. But I think you want to hear from our parents.
When we've asked before the parent surveys for this topic, what did we do?
We can't name it on the one time. Yeah, and we didn't hear anybody resist, like saying, why did we put our name up there? But just need to hear it there, so I don't know.
How did a community member?
We did ask them.
So how do we have somebody just make up fake names?
The very first one that we did was sent out, that was two years ago, a year and a half ago? Year and a half ago, initially. The one was very generic, and we just sent it out with some informational question with all the multiple. And you still could, you could put names on there.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
I can, I can make up names too.
You're pulling the telephone line.
I'm okay with not putting names on there. I think the, I mean, I get the point about the rigor of the survey, but it's not that sort of research-based survey. I do, but I hear the point about no names. I'm okay with that. I do like Don's suggestion about at least a little tug on the conscience if somebody thinks that you're going to, you know, send it around the fiber front, so it's a community that can't even fill it out. So I think that makes, at least a little pull on the conscience to, we want us to think, think it is right and exact.
Are there any other questions on the survey, regardless of, except number one and four, that you would like to hear, or you do not want to hear, or you'd like to be adjusted?
I think we should add something to the effect of one per person.
I got that, and I got the checkbox, we talked about the checkbox at the end, I was like, I certify that I'm doing some good things.
And, and we'll just, yeah, we'll Hudsonville.
Yep.
Are you, it says we're at six, don't we?
Yeah, we're looking at getting this out tomorrow, and I know Amy's got to get her survey out too, and we don't want to survey exhaust our community, but we need to get the board some information. We'd like to send this out tomorrow, to get it going, but we want to make sure the board had a chance to have that on there.
And I very much appreciate that you posed a question, if you could just remind parents that there is information to be exchanged between school and home, and that even if they've never done that before, hopefully those individuals will be triggered to say, oh, you know what, maybe I should take a look at that, or, oh, I guess I really wasn't paying that much attention. So I appreciate the way that the survey was written on those sections to be reminded to parents as well.
That's a great point. We will have parents that fill it out, I'm just speaking personally, in which my wife could have had detailed conversations and all this stuff, and then I get the survey and it filled out like I didn't know any of this stuff, so we'll have some of that in the next one, that's okay.
Between you and your wife.
We don't have a fifth grader, we don't have a fifth grader, so that helps, they will not be filling out the survey.
Does this touch on all of the main items that were in the initial survey that we're going to compare?
There's some additional questions that are in there. We tried to take the input the board had a while ago, and I don't know if you were here, Mr. L, but about some open-ended items that were not in there. I think Mr. Tuttle had that question initially about, we've got to have some more open-ended questions. And then there was a comment that the board was embracing SCL, but was it ruled that we should embrace? And we didn't, we didn't look at options, it should be something else. It was, do you want ruler or not? And we asked the parents additional here, just because some of them had a chance to
Maybe the questions. All right, there are none. We will do a round table.
Do I get to start, or do I go last? I didn't have an update on here, and I thought, I understand the round table, we should start with the board members, but I just threw a couple things out there, because I don't have an update. We've had, I've had one, two, three, four focus groups so far, and I have five more the rest of this week. Is that about right? Yep, so, and they've been gone, they've gone really well. We had 27 parents in this morning for a focus group, which was, you know, an hour and 15 minute focus group, got done in just under two hours. And it's been, it's just been great, just listening and hearing about positives and maybe some things that we can work on as a district. So I'm looking forward to give the board a complete update on that soon. So the focus group should be done by the end of the week. Sorry about the weather, you heard about this, if you hadn't heard about the snow days, we didn't have school a couple days last week. Exams are yesterday and today, I'm sorry, today and tomorrow, steer your lawn it up, it'll be yesterday, for the high school, so they'll be concluding their second trimester exams and moving it into third trimester. And we have a conflict at our next board meeting, and I mentioned to President Burvet, both auditoriums are occupied at our next board meeting. Our kids are ready, their musical starts a week later, so this auditorium here, the stage is not an option, and Unity is using the other stage, is not an option. So we're open to suggestions. I think if the agenda looks very straightforward with a few items as discussed tonight, then maybe we can hold it in here, or we can hold it in our existing boardroom that we've had at the administration building. If for any reason there is a topic that we feel that there's several public comment, or there's something all of a sudden added to the agenda that we have to address right away, we can always move it to a gymnasium if we had to. So I guess maybe we can have conversations, I don't know if anybody has an opinion, but if you do, maybe let President Hooper know, and then we can try and make a decision. You know, we really need to make the decision if it's not on the site.
I think the admin room, I think a few more people can fit in that room here, I don't know.
I think this, yeah.
You can fit more people because they can stand in the back, but.
Plus they're used to this space, I mean, it's been a long time since we've been at the admin.
We are really ready to go back there, just so you know.
Can we just have our own room someday?
That would be epic.
By the time I, you know, gone maybe, but yeah, it would be nice to have a real board meeting someday.
A real board room. Agreed.
So, I'm thinking maybe then this is.
Okay, we'll plan on coming back. The layout will look different, we won't be sitting in this setting, which will allow for additional chairs and people from there. Yeah, a little bit similar to the interview. Okay, that's my update, sorry. I had an opportunity to go read to my son Jack since kindergarten.
I had an opportunity to go read to my son Jackson's kindergarten class today, and let me tell you, it was a very special day, and the work that they're doing at Allred Elementary, and the work the teachers they have there, it's just, it's good stuff, just wanted to share that.
Well done, well prepared for everything tonight, everybody, so just a good meeting, a lot of things to continue to push the district forward, so well done.
Yeah, the PowerPoints are like some of the best I've seen, really, really good stuff, really excited to get some really good data as well. Since we're talking about field trips and stuff, I was at the ECC today, so that was pretty cool, that was my old snowing grounds in 7th, 8th, and 9th grade, we were the one year that had that, I was there for three straight years, so it's a lot different, 25 years ago. But it was shocking to like, as we're looking at the schematics for the 56 building, and how cool those rooms are, to walk into the classrooms at the ECC and think, holy cow, it used to be the high school, it crammed those kids into there, it was even tight for us, so it was cool to take the stroll on November 8. Cool staff, great staff.
I just pray that that baby comes, another day's passed, too, and it's driving me crazy, my mother probably too.
Better happen by next Thursday.
Well, yeah, I think by Thursday, they'll try to hurry a lot, so we're...
Mr. Jancy.
Thank you for the microphones, and also thank you for, I've had several elementary teachers, principals we've talked to, and I appreciate that, and you can just keep on sending them and that, that's it.
All right, it was a great meeting, great presentation, all right, the motion to adjourn. Motion by Ken, support, support from John, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? All right, we are adjourned.